There's chairs over here.
Everybody ready? Let's stay in the same place.
Congratulations to the United States of America to the Republic, which stands on its nation and our individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Yes, our next business is Mr. Young has sworn in here to be the morning counsel. If you'd step up.
That would be great. Just step onto this, like right that side of the podium. I'm gonna read it. Left hand on the Bible if you want to touch it and send it close. You might not comfortable. All right, if you will repeat. I, Jeff Young.
I, Jeff Young.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina. And to my, then I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
I'll be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
Each of the constitutional powers and importance.
Constitutional powers and importance.
Which far or may be established.
Are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
What inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Best of my knowledge and ability.
To help me out. I, Jeff Young.
I, Jeff Young.
Do further solemnly swear.
Further solemnly swear.
That I will execute the office.
That I will execute the office.
Of council member for the town of Mills River, North Carolina.
Of county member for the town of Mills River, North Carolina.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Favor, affection, or partiality.
Favor, affection, or partiality.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To help me out.
Welcome on board, Jeff.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward. We need a motion to approve the agenda, please. So we'll make that item G. Is that okay? Okay, is that okay with staff? Okay, moving at to G. Would that change? Can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jeff. All in favor? Okay, any announcements? Anybody have any announcements other than public? Okay. Let's see, on public announcements, if you're wanting to get up and speak as far as the special use permit, I need you to do that in that portion of the special use permit. If it's anything pertaining to anything else other than the special use permit, you're welcome to come up at this time. Dottie? If you would, when you get to the microphone, give the ladies your name and address.
Pardon my back, y'all. Off on my best side. My name is Dottie Davis. I'm a resident of Mills River. And Mr. Mayor and Council, I have to tell you, I'm kind of disappointed in the sign that I've seen on Jeffers Road.
Hold up, Dottie. Are you, is, is all your comments pertaining to that Jeffers Road?
No.
Okay, well, let's.
Skip that one.
If you can, and we'll come back to that during that portion, if you would, please, just so there's not a conflict.
All right, I understand the town council is considering the purchase of a piece of property from a Jack Fleming that joins town property over here by Kirby's.
Potentially?
Potentially. Well, I'd like to express my approval of doing that. I think it's a perfect place for the curb market.
Okay.
Or the farmer's market, whatever you want to call it. They need a permanent location. On the other hand, however, I can't see any sense in spending $7 million purchasing this property next door, which has been a consideration, I understand, from Bradley Johnston. What would the town use it for?
Okay. Oh, I don't, I don't know. I don't, at this point, I have no idea.
And why would we purchase it?
I have no idea.
How much do we have in the slush fund?
It's, it's, it's difficult to discuss potential property acquisitions.
I can't hear you. Can you take that thing off?
We, there, there is a healthy fund balance that the town has, and I think to the mayor's point, no decisions.
What's he saying?
No decisions.
By the way, they can't hear you back there because y'all weren't using your microphones.
Mine's on, Dottie.
Okay.
You know, most property acquisitions will be handled in a closed session situation.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know exactly where you're getting all your information, but if you would, just have them come talk to us about it, please.
It's sort of circulating around Mills River that that property over there is being considered for purchase. $7 million, and I believe that's about the same amount of money that we have in the rainy day fund.
Oh, yeah. I don't, I don't think so. I don't, I don't know. You called me off guard, Dottie. A lot of this I don't know anything about.
I caught the mayor off guard.
You sure?
Okay. But you're gonna bring up the issue of the townhouses hyphen apartments on Jeffers Road at a.
In just, in approximately 20 to 20 minutes or so.
And people will have input?
Yes, we will have public input. Absolutely.
Well, let me say it right now. I think it's ridiculous.
You can't, you can't say it right now.
Can't say that?
You can't really say it right now.
Well, I guess that's all I have to say, except, let me just add this. Other than Sandra, maybe Jeff, by the way, congratulations. Does anybody here have any idea who started the incorporation of Mills River?
There's several involved.
I mean?
There was several involved.
No, there was one involved, me. And it was done at the community center when we had a meeting over there. And then I gathered people together. Wayne Carlin was one of the first. Although if you talk to Roger, he did it. However, Roger came on later on. My main purpose in incorporating Mills River was to maintain the rural farm atmosphere that we were enjoying at the time. We are slowly losing that. Let me amend that. We are rapidly losing that. I don't think that basically the people who are from Mills River want to see what's happening here.
Okay, Dottie, I, I promise I'm gonna give you time to talk here shortly about all this.
Okay.
I just don't want you crossing any lines with us and the applicant, so.
Oh, there's an applicant?
For the special use permit, yes, ma'am.
Oh. Aside from that, with all the development that's going on in Mills River, I just don't think that's what we intended in the beginning when we had a visiting session and when you all had a visiting session recently. The overall feeling was that people wanted to keep the rural atmosphere.
Dottie, please, let's, let's talk about this in a minute. It'll, it'll, it'll make, it'll, it'll have a time and place, I promise you.
Okay.
I'm not short standing you.
Right.
It's just a time and place, and this is a special call hearing for this, which we have to come into it knowing nothing about.
Ah.
Yes, nothing about. We had to find fact, the findings and everything tonight, and then we'll move forward with it.
Okay, but please speak louder in your microphones because people in the back can't hear.
We will try our best, okay?
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dottie.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike Corn, do you, is yours later? Okay, thank you, Mike. Okay, that's all of that. Approval of the consent agenda with the D, the resolution being moved down to G and a regular agenda. Somebody make me a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Sandra. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Randy. All in favor? unanimous, okay. Onto our regular agenda. We got Mark Williams here. He's gonna give us an update. We got a big crowd for you tonight.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Good evening, council members. Good to see everybody. It's good, we've had a chance to meet you, so it's a pleasure to meet you. Daniel, are you gonna operate that PowerPoint? Okay, very good. Well, I'm here tonight to, I guess, with my hand out. But as I've told people in the past, our organization, Agribusiness Henderson County, we don't, we don't look for money without making sure that there is a return on that investment. And I take that, you know, very seriously, and so we try to quantify what we're doing and to show the return on, on that investment for, in this case, the town of Mills River. I'll go ahead and, let's see, are we ready to go there, Daniel? That's fine. Well, he's getting that PowerPoint ready. Hopefully, all of you have a copy of the letter that I sent over to Daniel today, which is essentially kind of an outline of what I'll go through here in the way of a PowerPoint presentation. Sometimes pictures help me, so maybe they'll help you as well, but. Now we're getting somewhere. All right, very good. Most of you recognize this picture we're taking right here in the heart of Mills River. We, we actually use this on our website as the main page because Mills River is such a big part of agriculture within Henderson County. Now, if I can get this to, there we go. Just a little bit of background, for those of you who may not be familiar with the organization, with Agribusiness Henderson County, or as we refer to ourselves as AgHC. It began as initiative of the county back in 2011. We incorporated as a 501(c)(6) in 2013. We are set up like as a public-private partnership, much like you'd see our partnership, the economic development, and other economic development groups. Our, our public partners, the county provides the majority of our funding, and I'll share that in just a minute. We've also, from our beginning, have had support from the town of Mills, Mills River, which we appreciate very much, been a great partner throughout, through our, our existence. City of Hendersonville also makes a contribution, even though there are not a lot of farming goes on in the city of Hendersonville. They do see the benefits just as, as the county seat. We currently have 67 private members, 22, 20 of those happen to be based right here in Mills River. So there's local investment that supports what we're doing. 17 board members, and about a third of those are made up of Mills River residents as well. I may have hit something there, but that's okay. Just to give a brief overview there of what we do and the way of our mission, we're, we're a little different than, say, what folks might be accustomed to in the partnership, which is largely about recruitment. They do provide some support. We try to support all of our existing operations, as much as, as we do try to recruit anybody new coming into the area. We want to take care of those that have been here for a while, have a vested interest, and look after their needs in what ways that we can from the economic side. We also do look at new business development. It may be new companies, it may be companies that are here and are expanding. Look for new markets and improved opportunities for folks. We also get involved with, from standpoint of educating the community, different groups, civic groups, things of that nature, public relations, working a lot with our elected officials at the local level, state level, federal level as well. And then we do some, some promotion. That's not one of our primary things, but we do in a kind of an aggregate manner, try to promote agriculture within, within the county. And we are really, as much as anything, a contact point for being able to coordinate opportunities, put people in touch with others. This is a overall impact. Wish we had numbers specific for, for Mills River. You really can't get that bad. It's hard enough to get what we do get. But the overall impact for the county is, we see about $775 million that's coming from the ag, an agribusiness sector that's going to the local economy. Total jobs about 5,400, and most, most models indicate that there's a multiplier effect of 2.8, which for, for each base level job on up the ladder, it may be, you take, it may be a person that's even picking tomatoes, let's say, and that person actually supporting jobs for trucking, sales, distribution, all those aspects. So if you, if you count those things together, it'd be a multiplier of about 15,000 jobs for the county that come directly from, from agriculture. Ag and Mills River, I don't have to tell you all. You see the produce around, and we got such a wide variety. Greenhouses, certainly forage and field crops. We don't want to discount those. That's, that's big. Dairy farms, not as many as we used to have, still got a couple. Sod farms, packing houses, processing, distribution, then of course, more recent, we've seen more agritourism. We do provide, as I said, general support assistance, so I'll give you just a quick rundown there of some of the things that we're doing and have done. I mentioned new market opportunities. We do try to bring people in who are looking to buy commodities that we grow here in the area. And so when we see those opportunities, we try to connect them with local growers. Recognize Kirby Johnson there in the tomato field, and those are some buyers, and try to, try to hook them up. Some companies that we see, that's just a sampling of some folks that we see that come in from outside the area looking to, to partner, maybe having a growing partnership, maybe actually purchasing. So we make those connections, that somebody can grow a certain commodity for a particular company. That seems to be a trend that we're seeing more and more of. The promotion side, of course, we have the normal social media. We, we do some, some stuff in print as well. That bottom ad, which happens to be for North River Farms, during the growing season, we secure a space in the lightning, and we, we put an ad out there each week, and we try to recognize one, one of the members of the organization. Education. James might recognize this, this facility there. This is a group, it's, it's the, I, I want to get it wrong probably, it's a leadership group for Henderson County. They have a group come in each year, basically have a class session. About 30 people sign up for that, educate them on what's taking place in Henderson County. This happens to be Ag Day. Ruth Burge there brings a group out, and we tour around different facilities and let them have a understanding of what's taking place. Part of our public relations and advocacy as well goes to, we do a listen and learn session each, each month. We try to have those COVIDs interrupted that a bit. This is John Mitchell, our county manager, speaking to a group there. We, we try to do that to keep, keep our ag community informed of what's going on and put them in contact with people that have an impact on what they do. Just here, I mean, this happens to be our, one of our senators, Tom Tillis, who, who came, and this was during the time that we had some, some crop disasters took place from, from flooding. We were able to get him here. We talked about that. We talked about, we talk about our ongoing issue and needs for labor on farm, which is a major, major challenge. So we help coordinate things of that nature. Stay involved, Mills River Partnership, which I'm sure all of you are pretty well aware of. I sit on that board and have, I guess, since that began, so we try to stay involved from that standpoint as well. Let's see here. Hold my mouth right. Here we go. Now, just kind of go through some, some of our businesses, just real briefly, that are here. Some of these are, are specific projects that we worked with from the very beginning in terms of recruitment and helping to bring them here. I like to pull this picture up just because it shows right here in the heart of Mills River just how many ag and ag-related operations that do still exist. A lot of farms have gone by the wayside, but these facilities, in many cases, are kind of supporting facilities too for the outlying, you know, field production of crops and things of that nature. But you can see there, it's, I'm pleased, pleased that ag still has such a strong presence in this part of the county. There's RWI, we, we certainly know that. Been here for a long time, Flavor First growers and packers, some of the major players and certain tomato production, and then the, the packing and distribution of those tomatoes. That all goes along with it too, not just production side. North River Farms, Jason and Shay Davis. And Super Sod, this is just a sampling of some, Mills River Creamery and the dairy are next door here. Tri-Histol, Tri-Histol is one of the earliest projects that we, that we were part of in bringing, bringing them here. And right now, they're actually undergoing an expansion and doubling that operation and seeing some really good opportunities ahead of them. Crafted vegetables. Old Rock, some, some may like it, some may not, but nonetheless, I will tell you that Old Rock is, is a project that we helped them look, helped them with getting into this facility. It was available, it was on the market. It was part of, it was on our radar. I mean, it's, it's production in one sense, but it does provide a good marketplace for our apple growers within the county and, and selling the apples for juice. Lakeside, Lakeside Produce is just over on Ladsen Road. It's not in Mills River, but it's right across the road. And I know it has its impacts, probably good and bad, but it does have impacts on, on the town. It's a major investment in growing tomatoes there. It's a 15-acre greenhouse site. And it is very high-tech. See everything being labeled there for growing in North Carolina. Some you may not be aware of, we, we didn't play a major part, but we, we certainly do help and work with some of these other companies come in. This is on the agribusiness side with, with equipment, equipment dealers. So out off of old, of old 191, with Case, Case folks with Hills Machinery. This is Guy Erbs, where as many of you know, have been here for a long time, Plants Direct. You can't get away from calling it that, but actually, there was a recent turnover in that property. You may not be aware of. Folks that, that have it want to be pretty low-key, so we try to respect that. But we've been involved with, it's a new group that's come in, and it is very, very high-tech in what they are doing, and it will be some, some good jobs will be created as a result of that, and even some improvements to this, this facility. Just to point out a few key projects and some of the impact, and I'll rush through this pretty quickly. Tri-Histol alone has 150 new, new jobs. Some of those are full-time, some of those are part-time. There's about a $10 million been invested there. Old Rock is roughly 50 jobs. They've made some major improvements, capital improvements. It's property that is taxable. Some of the utilities that, that we were directly responsible for bringing, bringing in included particularly the sewer and water lines down Schoolhouse Road. Came through Golden Leaf money, came through money through the county, and we were able to secure, secure $563,000 for that project. And then for the Lakeside project, even though, you know, that's, again, split, the road splits the county from the, from the town, we did get a water line expansion, which helped some of the neighbors out there, improved the power supply from, from Duke, as well as improved internet services. To quantify some of that, just in, in our existence, we've been responsible directly. We can point to a very, very specific $12 million in capital improvement or investments, which alone at a 19 cent per $100 value on the tax side for the town is generating revenue of $22,800 a year. So again, just try to quantify this. Utility improvements, at least, at least a million dollars there, just in the way of improvements to utilities. 340 jobs, something that we sometimes probably don't focus enough on, and that's, that's looking at ways that we've been able to actually preserve ag property and ag land. And we, by, by calculations that we have, we've been able to preserve 408 acres of land and agriculture that otherwise could very well have gone for other, other developments. So we're very pleased that we've been able to, to accomplish that. It's one of our goals, and as we know, one of, one of the town's goals. So here's the request, here's the ask. We, we, this is our budget. We're trying to be very transparent. Looking from 2022 to 2023, we had a, we had a budget last year, total budget of $207,300. This year's slightly higher than that. It has gone, we, it's been bouncing back around, as you can imagine with COVID, it's been a little bit hit and miss. But I can't point back to a four-year history. And over the four-year history, our expenses have increased by 23.6%. During that time, we, we've not come back to the town or to other, some, other sources and asked for increases. Now, the county did increases, I guess it's been three, maybe four years ago, four years ago, and gave us a pretty significant increase, which has helped us. Expenses do continue to rise, and they go up. We've tried to manage that very closely. We do what we can with what we have. But it becomes more of a challenge and a bit more of a struggle. So we would respectfully ask the town to continue funding us and, and to increase that at, at 10% versus our, what we've seen is an increase of almost 24%. So it goes from 15,000 to 16,500. So that's the request, and that kind of gives you a bit of a history of where we are, what we're doing. And I tell you, I'm working right now currently with a number of projects. Some of those very likely could end up here in Mills River. Good projects. We try to, we try to work with folks. Honestly, if people are here and they want to buy property, and they can do it legally, and they can do things legally, whether we like them or not, they're coming. We can control things to an extent, and that's what we try to do. As much as we can, we try to find folks, and we're working with people. We try to make sure that's compatible, that it's not folks that are, that are gonna be bad neighbors. And if they are bad neighbors, we actually let them know about that, and we try to work with it and try to, try to, try to get people to cooperate. So that's kind of what we do and the way we go about it. And so we respect the town, we respect what you have here as a community, and we appreciate your partnership and, and hope that that can continue. So if you have any questions right now, I'd be happy to entertain those.
Anyone have any questions for more?
I'd just like to take opportunity to thank Mr. Williams personally. He's too modest to say, but he's been with this organization when it was just a concept and brought it to where it is today. AgHC is a tremendous resource and asset for agriculture, and all Henderson County residents benefit from it. And its success. And its success and by extension, our success as a county is a direct related to the work that Mr. Williams does. So I just wanted to thank him publicly for all the work he's done for the last decade with Ag Agency.
I appreciate it. It's been a pleasure for me and I'll tell you every time, it is a team effort. We cannot do it all alone. I get the pleasure to get to be in the seat that I'm in and it, and I do count it as a joy and a pleasure and a great blessing. Thank you very much. Work with some great people, some fine folks.
I want to follow up with that sentiment and agree, obviously, a hundred percent. I go to his Listen and Learns when he does them. And yeah, that's a great resource for everybody in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Or anybody else? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
But look.
Okay. At this point, I guess I need a motion. And we'll, we'll go into public here. Yes, well, we're going to take this to two-minute bathroom break. Thank you.
And again, I skipped over this, but the planning board at their February first meeting did recommend approval of this as well. The submitted plans currently meet town zoning code requirements. The standards that council will have to vote on is in your packet, but I'll list them for the public's benefit. One is satisfactory ingress and egress from the property. Two is provision of off-street parking, loading areas, et cetera. Three is provision of utilities, four provision of buffering. Five provision of playgrounds, open spaces, yards, accessways, pedestrian facilities, et cetera. And six is building and structures in reference to location, size, and use. So town council's options are approved, the special use permit with or without conditions. Deny it, celibate, citing relevant evidence to support that decision to avoid a legal challenge. Or three table for additional consideration. Or if you want to ask the applicant for additional information or evidence that may not be available tonight. And then I'm just going to highlight the evidence that's in the council packets that I'm going to formally submit into the evidentiary hearing record. So attachment A are the special use permit application materials. Attachment B is the engineered development plan. Attachment C is the updated concept plan, which is also a presentation the applicant applicant is going to deliver tonight. Attachment D are the utility allocation letters from Metropolitan Sewerage District of Buncombe County and Hendersonville Water. Attachment E is the traffic impact analysis. Attachment F is the comprehensive plan and future land use map analysis excerpt. And attachment G is the certificate of mailing of public notice letters certifying that those were sent out. And so I submit those into the record. And that's the end of my summary. Thank you, Mark.
At this point, I'd like to ask the applicant if I agree or object to any of his exhibits. Agree?
We agree.
Does any of the council have questions for a law and officer at this point?
I have just a
Yeah.
clarification. In our ordinance, it refers to this use as a multifamily development. And then the the plan sheets referred to as a single-family attached development. Is there any? Is that just semantics or is there anything behind that?
It's just semantics. Yeah.
At this point, notice of board members of any personal knowledge of this prior to going into this meeting tonight. Has anybody seeked any kind of information, went out trying to talk to people about it? Tried to reach out to the applicant, property owner, anything such as that? Do you need to speak now?
Mr. May, may I add a comment, please?
Yes.
Just for the for the record is clear, I bet with two, one recently elected councilperson, which is good. And then Mr. Young recently to go over quasi judicial proceedings. We did not discuss the the application at all. It was just, this is their first time, just want to make them aware of quasi judicial proceedings, evidentiary hearings. But again, we did not discuss the case.
Okay, thank you.
Just so everybody knows, my oldest son does go to the school. And it has not been discussed and at all. We're not discussing.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, at this point, we'd like to see the presentation of applicant, any evidence or he might want to give us. I'll take him this second to get you pulled up there.
Good evening. My name is Brett Bassnight. I'm with Long Branch Development. We are the petitioner for this application. Tonight with me, I have my full design team. Mark Brooks with Brooks Engineering, engineer of record on the project. And also our traffic engineer, Colin Kitten. We did do a full traffic study for this proposal. And what we are talking about tonight is a single-family attached townhome development that is 148 units. The question was asked, are these townhomes or are they multifamily? From a construction standpoint, they're townhomes in every sense of the word. The only difference is that they will be rented instead of sold individually. And we are a regional developer that's based in the upstate of South Carolina. Our footprint includes the Carolinas, Florida, Georgia, and all the way to Texas. So we have a strong knowledge base of the execution process on how to accomplish this as well as who the renters will be. Every picture that you can see on the presentation are townhomes that we have built, recently constructed, and are fully occupied. This is just an aerial of where the site is for site context. The two primary access points on to Jeffers Road will be from Boylston Highway, which is shown as number one. And then on Cardinal Road as a secondary point, which is shown as number two. The party hospital system is under construction just west of our site. And you can see that nearly outside the window here. So we are working with two different property owners on this proposal. What is outlined in pink is the Franklin Family Trust. Mr. Franklin is here tonight. He's available to answer any questions that you may have. And then outlined in yellow is the Cavalry Fellowship Church. Mr. Franklin's property is currently being used as a single-family home and a tomato farm on a lease. It's on the southern portion of the property. The Cavalry Fellowship Church component that's outlined in yellow will be subdivided from their greater campus. It is currently being used as a septic leach field. And as part of our partnership with the church, we will be providing access to publicly available water through our site, which will help them grow their campus at a date of their choosing. Mark Chapman, a church elder, is here tonight and can answer any questions about his goals for the church. The overall zoning for the property, I believe Michael mentioned it, but it is zoned Mills River neighborhood commercial. So allowable uses by right would include retail or office. Residential is allowed through a special use permit application. That is why we're bringing this forth tonight through the special use process. This is a closer look at our site plan. Here you can see our two access points on Jeffers Road. All the pictures that are on the top of the site plan here are communities that we have been involved with or developed ourselves. And so the primary access point will be closest to the Boylston Highway intersection, which is on kind of page bottom of that site plan. Residents will live in two different floor plans, which we will discuss in greater detail in a moment. But the property will be owned and operated by my company, Long Branch Development. It'll be staffed 24/7, so we will have onsite maintenance for all the units as well as property maintenance for landscaping. As part of our proposal, we always have a courtesy officer on the property. So 24/7 security will be available at the property as well. These are just some more images of what we are proposing. This depicts the two floor plans. On the bottom of the page, you can see the building footprints themselves. So the interior units will be 22-foot wide townhomes. The living condition of those townhomes will be a ground floor kitchen and living room, and then three bedrooms upstairs. The units on the exterior of the plan are 28 feet wide. Those will be a double master. So they're fantastic for roommate situations. It's a true double master in every sense of the word. And that will be a master down. The we have limited the height in this application to two stories maximum. So that from the base elevation to the pitch, we are looking at approximately 30 feet in height. These are some interior shots of the townhomes we have developed. You can see we have luxury kitchens with stainless steel appliance packages, open floor plans, luxury vinyl plank flooring, and grand master bedrooms with large walk-in closets. These are some of the shots of amenities that we have built across the southeast. In the top right picture, that is actually the exact amenity that we are showing on the site plan here. So the amenity going back to the site plan would be, I'll just flip back if you don't mind. But going back to the site plan, you can see the amenity and leasing office. Page right will have a large dog park as well as an open activity space. And we like to keep that open so that children can kick the soccer ball, throw the frisbee, and we can have programmatic events there. We'll also have a pool, a luxury pool in cabana. And so the the big question tonight is, of course, who will be the end user? Who will live at this community? Through our regional footprint, we found we really have two ends of the spectrum. Most of our residents are what we like to call an apartment graduate. So somebody perhaps that's living in downtown Asheville and is seeking greater space as they grow older. Perhaps they're making a life change. They've recently been married. Or they've decided to settle down. And so they're seeking to buy a home likely in Mills River and haven't found the right spot yet. Some of these folks would have young children. But in terms of how many children we typically have, it's usually less than five at each community. And they're on the younger end of the spectrum, so elementary age school children. Because we're offering a master down in this community, we do expect to see empty nesters that have perhaps sold a home and have decided that they'd prefer the lock and leave lifestyle. So with that, that concludes the evidence I'd like to present. And I'm available along with my team to answer any specific questions that you may have. Well, I'm sorry, I did forget one thing. The average size of these units will be, on average, 1,600 square feet. And the starting rent will be approximately $1,800 per month. That can be split in a three-bedroom or a double-master program. Thank you very much.
Are you right there? Anyone having questions for the applicant?
I do.
Yes.
Okay. I didn't see on the schematics here anywhere, where's where's the sewer line that we access?
See if this works. The sewer line cuts right through. Perfect. Thank you very much. That is the sewer line that's crossing the property boundary. So we will tie directly into that at two points. And the water line will be approximately in that same location. We will make the church connection on kind of the top of the page between the three buildings that border the plan, border the boundary there. Perfect.
This is sewer line that's already in place, Daniel, that Ingalls uses.
That's correct.
It was ripped down the creek.
Is that Henderson County or Buncombe County? Are all these apartments going to be rental apartments or any of them going to be vacation homes?
No vacation homes, no man. So these are long-term rentals. Typically, our minimum lease is eight months, but most of the time we're looking at 12 to 16 months.
And no subcontract release?
Absolutely not, amen.
Mr. Bass, I appeared on a lot of these plan sheets that are you subdividing the lots?
We are, yes, sir.
Individual lots for each townhome?
Yes, sir, we are. Yes, and to add on to your question, it's a very good question. We are subdividing the lots. And from a fire safety perspective, these will be built to the IRC, the International Residential Code. So the units will have a two-hour fire party wall between each one of them with multiple points of ingress and egress.
Is that the primary rationale for the subdividing of the property further?
Yes, sir.
How did y'all come up with 148 units? Did you just try to use as much available land that's outside the floodplain as that? And still leave enough room for roads and amenities in between? Or how did y'all establish 148 units on this track?
Based on four units per acre. And across our regional footprint, the majority of our communities are approximately 150 to 200 units. So it fits our strike zone very, very well. It allows us to lease up the community, maintain it with appropriate staff.
Okay. Are you going to party?
Yes, sir.
They're built right next to you. Are you going to raise to their level? You know, they brought in Phil and
Yes. Yes, we are on the southern portion of the plan. Very good question on the southern portion of the plan. We will have to bring in Phil on the site. About 60% of the plan, approximately 60%, is open space. But on where you see the townhomes on the southern portion of the site, we will have to fill closer to the amenity space. And that's due to the flood zone issue that I think you're alluding to, to bring it to ax. Yes, sir.
Well, I had a question pertaining to the traffic study. Should be directed to Mr. Kitten or you? Council indulged me a little bit of this. I'm trying to learn, so. My question pertains to the the assessment of the potential or proposed development. And I was looking at the, when you identified the peak hour based on your current traffic study and extrapolated to the proposed development, there were 69 trips during that peak hour in the morning. I just, 69 didn't ring true in my mind, just anecdotally as somebody that doesn't have experience in traffic studies with 148 units and figuring that if it's a family, there's usually two cars, the family. Or if it's an individual, most individuals these days, especially in this region, have roommates. So I was thinking, well, there might be close to 300 cars. And on a weekday morning, rush hour seems more than just a quarter of them would be exiting, going to work or school. So I just didn't know if you could enlighten me to how, what methodology you use to come up with 69 trips for 148 units?
Correct. The the methodology we use for the trip generation comes out of the Institute of Transportation Engineer Trip Generation Manual. And this is a nationally developed manual that has the trip generation rates for several hundred different uses. Single-family, multifamily, warehouse, industrial, grocery stores. And so we use those rates that have been developed and approved. And that is the NCDOT standard. So for a 148-unit townhome development, the peak hour generation is 69 trips.
Is that, I'm sorry. Is that a regional or do they, or is it nationwide in number?
It is nationwide. They they do break it down based on urban, suburban, rural designations. And so this is a suburban-type designation. But it does tend to trend over time as the studies are updated every few years. Because more people are starting to work from home. Not everybody in a family or in a household will drive or drive during peak hours.
Something that jumped out at me was this this level of service and it's the Cardinal Road, Highway 280. And this is after 2023 and the proposed development is in place. The the delay turning onto Highway 280 actually is reduced. It gets better after the development's in. And that sort of went counter to common sense, at least from where I sit. So I don't know if you could enlighten me on how that comes to be in your report?
That that happens occasionally with unsignalized intersections. Where you have, you're looking at an average delay. And what is happening is the volume that we assign to that intersection is predominantly turning right. And the right turns have significantly less delay than somebody wanting to turn left. So it becomes a, an averaging. So if you've got, for example, 15 people turning right with very little delay and one person turning left with a high delay, you average that together for your delay. In this case, we've gone, and I don't have the exact numbers, but you know, from 15 to 20 turning right. And you still only have one turn to left. So that average delay has actually goes down just very slightly because more people are turning right.
Thank you. Follow that line of thought. And again, educate me a little bit on the level of service and the letter grades that are assigned. I don't know if that's a North Carolina or if that's a national standard.
National standard.
I call them letter grades. It may be the wrong moniker to use. Is there a letter designation for level of service that indicates the road fails to meet its intended capacity or use?
Typically, level service Es and Fs indicate that it is either at capacity or exceeding capacity.
Because of one designation that did show a decline in your study, I guess maybe it wound up being a C after. Now I was curious if there was a trigger. And also, I think you mentioned in your report that I guess if there was a change of 25%, maybe that triggered something, maybe either in your assessment or something else. I don't know if you could explain. If the if the traffic impact, if the proposed development results in a 25% increase in delays or level services. I'm sorry, I couldn't use the right terminology. But what happens at 25 or 30% or what will have that would change your report?
Typically, if, and this is in looking at when level service is at a more of a borderline acceptable to unacceptable, a 25% increase in delay will trigger looking at potential mitigation. But in the same caveat, depending on the the delay, if the delay is very low. So if if the delay is 10 seconds, 25% increase in delay from 10 seconds to 12 and a half seconds, I'm doing the math right, is not a significant increase in delay because that's still like level service B. If you understand. That's all I have at the moment, there.
Did any of these calculations yours take into consideration the possibility of the buildout that could, that's more than likely going to happen at Taproot Dairy on Butler Bridge Road? That could potentially be coming to the Ingalls or just coming to Mills River in general?
No.
And why would it not, knowing it's going to be over there?
I was not informed of it. Wasn't aware of it.
Anybody got anything else at this point? What, you got something maybe tell them up? We can get them by.
You, there's a portion of that property that's in the Mills River watershed.
Yes.
You know about that, obviously. If any, anything, anything on that?
Mark, do you want to speak to that?
It could potentially come into play with the stormwater management requirements. And because of a couple of criteria, greater than 24% impervious surface and more than two units per acre, we're already having to comply with a high-density stormwater management criteria, which requires deworm quality and attention measures which are which are planned, so.
So you don't have the, you haven't gotten approval yet from the PWT or was it?
Not for the stormwater, no.
No.
No, we haven't applied. We typically don't apply for stormwater permits until after approved by zoning commissions, yeah. We'll have to go through that process.
Anybody got anything else at this point?
This is for Michael. Michael, how much of this property is in mixed-use district, please?
So there's three different parcels. The Franklin Family Trust parcel that's all the way, I guess, adjacent to Jeffers Road and is the smallest little sphere at the top, that's mixed-use. And then the Cavalry Church property is about a 50/50 split. For some reason, the zoning boundary actually, I don't know why, splits the property in half. But the whole southern track, the main portion of the Franklin Family property is all neighborhood commercial. So I would say maybe two-thirds neighborhood commercial, a third mixed-use if you take the whole area.
And and what the applicant is requesting from the town is that in our ordinance at this time? Are they asking for something to be approved that's not allowable in our ordinance at this time?
No, what they are requesting, both these zoning districts allow this process. It's not a permitted by right, but through the special use permit.
But they are allowed up to four units per acre in both of these zoning districts.
The the zoning district standard itself doesn't outline that. But the multifamily section of the code allows the increased density.
And both of those are allowed in mixed-use and
Correct.
Good commercial.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks.
So was it? Speaking on density, it was, the permit is for 154.081. I think the four per acre is for .082.
You're just saying about the ordinance reference. I I'm not sure if I put 154.081 in my staff report, that's incorrect. Multifamily is 154.082, which is multifamily development.
Anybody else? I think we're going to move forward a little bit. Recognition of any other person in favor or against or request to give evidence. This will be a slightly different than this public comment about this. You're none? Okay, at this point, this will be recognition of any person wishing to give comment on this particular thing. At this point, I'll have you sit, step in, we might call you back up in a second. This and here, I have a few names. We'll go down these names. And as standard procedure in these and everything we pretty much do right here, we're going to give everybody three minutes to say your speech and we'll try to move it along as quickly as we can. And Dottie, you was the first one to sign up, so we'll hear you first.
Has an impact study been done on the effect that this would have on the schools?
Don't think so.
I think that needs to be done. I also think the study needs to be done on the traffic on Jeffers Road. They've already got the big tractor trailers coming out of Van Wingerton's. And that road is not very wide. So somewhere down the line with 148 units and 256 cars, two cars per unit, we're going to have to widen Jeffers Road. Now, whose obligation is that, the town of Mills River or the state of North Carolina?
I would refer to staff for that, but my gut feeling will be the state of North Carolina.
But we don't know for sure.
We do know for sure.
Okay.
I'm getting a nod from the
Nod from over there.
Yeah.
Well, I think an impact study needs to be done on the schools. The schools are already stressed to the max. Personally, and I have nothing against these people, I don't know anything about them, but I don't think Mills River is a place for development. and I have nothing against these people. I don't know anything about them, but I don't think Mills River is a place for development like this. We strive to keep Mills River rural and maintain the farm ambiance. And I understand you've got people with farmland that are getting older, their kids have moved away. They don't have any idea of moving back because they're already settled. So the land becomes available for sale and developers are picking it up. I fully understand that. But I don't think that Mills River is a place for townhomes, apartments. It just doesn't fit in. That's my opinion, for what it's worth.
Thank you. Mike Corn?
Evening, Mike. I'm all right. In case y'all know, I run Small Acres Dairy, which is the biggest Jersey farm in Henderson County. And we're located just down the road from this. So and before I get into this, I would like to say that Mr. Louis Franklin has been my friend, is my friend, and I hope he will continue to be my friend. My major concerns with this are the flood damage. How much are they going to have to raise this to get above what's flooded down there? Because that's flood plain. I don't know what his term, Jeff could tell me that, but it gets wet. And the other thing is the stormwater, if it's not going into the Mills River watershed, it's going down the ditch that runs right by my place. We already have problems with that. So that's my biggest thing. And if I counted that out right, they've got 37 acres. They're putting 148 homes on. That's four units per acre. That's, that's like Riverstone, which is right behind where I live. This will enable us to become more like Fletcher and our neighbors to the North Asheville. That's what this will do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Jenny Shealy?
So I actually intend to talk about farmers market, but after hearing the presentation, I figured I need to talk about this too. So what I would like y'all to concentrate on, we have been talking about the flood plain. So when they do raise that, it's going to displace it down the road and we're going to have more flood damage in other parts in the back part of Fletcher all down the Mills River. So also another concern I have is the rental versus ownership with a $1,800 a month rent. There is nobody in Mills River right now that can afford that on what was the 1,600 square feet. So I can honestly tell you my mortgage is, was half that easily. So it does not promote people to stay here because once you can't afford that, if we don't have the job structure to do that, we will end up like Asheville. There will just be transient people constantly. And we will not have the solidified community that we've had previous to this. So it really concerns me that not that I don't mind transient people and people coming here, working for six months and then leaving. And the fact that it's an eight monthly, that's a short term lease. Not long term lease, that's like years, two years, even five to 10 years, I've seen. So to me, that's a short term lease. And I used to be a landlord. And, you know, the first crack for anybody that would move here was like a six month lease because I got to make sure that they could pay their rent. And at $1,100 for, it was north of Asheville, $1,100 a month rent. It was rare that I had anybody that could stay there after six months. So, you know, I had to keep lowering my rent and lowering my rent. You know, and, and that's to facilitate, you know, longer stays and whatnot, but that also depends on how much people are making here. I mean, honestly, I work full time. I make over $20 an hour and I could not afford $1,800 worth of rent and all the rest of my utilities. That's crazy. I'm admin. I'm a native. I mean, this is where I grew up. I should be able to rent and live here if that would be my choice. Thank God I own my house. So there's a couple more concerns that I have. And right on the get a second. Dottie?
Yeah.
Okay. This is really not indicative of our lifestyle. Now, I am 44 years old next month. So Mills River has changed so much since I was little. There's paved roads where there used to be dirt roads. There used to be a whole lot more farms. You know, and that's, that's been kind of Oh, sorry. Yeah, not indicative of our lifestyle. So I don't really think that this fits in with who we are. And I don't think it gives the ability to pe, for people to stay here and be part of who we are as a community. Thank you.
Okay, that's all I had on my list. Who else wants to get up and speak tonight, comment on this? I got one in the back coming. You'll have to come to the, yes? If you would, give us your name and address.
My name is Janice Soles and I live on Cardinal Road off of Jeffress. I am concerned about the traffic. My Cardinal Road, we are a small development. And that road would be busy, much busy. Most people take that as a shortcut. And I am concerned about the traffic, even on Jeffress Road. It is, it's getting to be so crowded. I'm a former school teacher. The schools are going to be crowded. Right now, with all the development down 280, we are going to be having a terrible time with our school system. Our schools are already crowded. And I am just concerned with the traffic out here at this intersection in front of Ingalls. We have an accident there just about every day. And it's, it's really dangerous. And with all this traffic coming in, with all the development, I'm just concerned about the, even on Cardinal Road, we have kids there and that road is very narrow up through that. And we just can't have more traffic through that. So that is my concern.
Thank you. Anyone else? Step up, please.
My name's Larry Johnson. I've been here in Mills River thirty years. How long we've been there? And I watched it, the way the traffic builds up, schools let out, there's two, two schools. Avery. So they've been a Jehovah's Witness. And I had a friend that came from Pickle to Lockville. Every time I was doing something, she'd say, well, just call me Ms. Grace. So for a while I was surrounded with all good, I guess. Well, it's time for a little bit of bad to step forward. I came in from the area and here's a wire pronged sign sticking in my yard. And some guy standing over there wanting to buy my house. And of course, the answer is no. Why? My son. I said, you stay where they're at and you have to excuse me. I had a little battle Parkinson's and his brain's working. So. No. They want to turn the lower portion of the sod field into a playground? I'm sure that that could be arranged, I'm sure. From the people that own and control it properly. But we have a section. And I haven't heard nothing. All I got is a piece of paper that that says that what we're going to do, not can we do for you? It should be my three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll add to that.
Okay, step up and give us your name too, please.
I'm Daniel Johnson. It's my father. So he kind of gains or he stands to lose some stuff because that development was right around his house.
So he is the one in the middle.
He is the one in the middle. And he bought that house in 96. Mills River grew up around him. I'm all for development. It's going to happen. It's natural. Places grow because cities like Asheville has nowhere else. I understand that. I don't think that that is the proper location for 148 unit townhome. Because like he said, you have the school that James, your son attends. There is a school at the Seventh Day Adventist Church across the street. And then there's church services throughout that. I don't know if any of you ever set at that red light at Jeffress Road trying to turn. It can be kind of a pain sometimes, especially with heavy traffic. So yeah, I think the traffic is definitely going to be an issue there. I think if it had more like main road access, it'd be a different story. If its main access was off Bolson Highway, then I think that might be a great thing. But I don't think that a rental like that is what Mills River needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing someone else in the back raise their hand, if you would come forward, please.
Hello, all. If I can get this muzzle off. Yeah, I'm Louis Franklin over the trust of this family. And I made some notes here. I'm Louis Franklin selling of Franklin Trust. And I've resigned at Fletcher, North Carolina. I grew up in Mill River. Where we farmed the very property that Long Blanks Belt is buying. We had the opportunity to sell to other developments who wanted a to place many more houses on property than Long Blanks Belt. We settled on Long Blanks because of their primary selection of residential area that best fits with surrounding neighbors and town of Mill River. You will see that they lay out 37 acres, only part of property is being used. And the rest is being left area, clubhouse, pool, dog park, and plenty of green for all to enjoy. Long Blanks Development has many developments in the state and does first class development. No doubt, it will enhance the Mill River area and give much needed homes to members of families. I succeed to have them come in and build a development here that really impacts this area, the town of Mill River, which I still call home. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else want to give any comment at this point? Okay, moving forward. Let us have a preliminary discussion amongst us. Anybody's needing any more information we can ask for? Jeff, Sandra, anybody got anything to discuss at this point?
Well, I'll make the comment that both the staff report and then the Councilman Austin asked the question directly of staff. Application was complete and in compliance with both the major subdivision and the special use permit, which everything stated at this point has been. So the challenge for us as a council, obviously, is to ensure that it's not detrimental to public welfare and hurts adjacent property owners and public safety and it's harmonious with with our community. And obviously, that has to be presented to us in a quantifiable measure. So like with traffic, we only have one traffic study before us by someone that's qualified to do it, which says they'll have minimal impact on traffic. But if there's a counter to that, it can't be anecdotal. It has to be quantifiable by another traffic study by a qualified individual. So just for, I guess, just as a sounding board to fellow council members as well as the public here is that, you know, that's sort of the hand that's dealt us as a governing body is is to look after the interest of both the applicant and what they've done as well as the citizens that'll be impacted by it. But nor for us to define differently, we have to have something hard and fast about some of those criteria that I mentioned. I've heard a lot of concern, but I'm hesitant that there was enough information given that something we can hang our hat on, so to speak.
Jeff, in your professional opinion, I know it's not related to traffic studies by no means, but it just seems to me that, that the Taproot Dairy land development over there has to be taken into consideration with traffic flowing back this way. Your feelings?
Well, as I was telling Mr. Kenton that I'm a novice at best at traffic studies and was reading his document, his report. But for the benefit of those that haven't read it, basically, they take a snapshot or they sit at these impacted intersections throughout the day, try to determine what the window of most intense traffic is. And that's evening and mornings. Then they extrapolate that. And first they add they sort of look in their crystal ball to the future for 2023 to see what it would be in 2023 if development didn't happen. And that's sort of the baseline. Then they come back and say, well, in 2023, the housing development's online. What's the impact after then? And after that occurs. And so that's what sort of laid out. So yes, I would think that when they're looking at their crystal ball, that not only are they trying to use just overall growth figures for the area and region, but something significant like a major housing development, you know, within a mile as pros fly, I'm sure would impact the traffic study because that is one of the connectors, as you alluded to, that folks travel from that part to one of the biggest Ingalls stores in the region.
Anybody else? Well, I guess at this point, we just need to deliberate and consider all the factors set out in this ordinance. Let's see if we can, somebody pull those up and read them off just one, one at a time, I guess.
They are in your staff report?
Okay.
Last page. And just FYI, when you're ready to get to this point, if you would consider each one separately
Separately.
with motion and, and reasoning for your motion based on evidence presented tonight.
Exactly. So can we deliberate on each one separately, then move on to the next one after a vote? Okay. So are we satisfied with the ingress and egress?
Excuse me, just one more thing I forgot to mention. Your attorney is on Zoom if you get.
Your attorney is on Zoom if you get to where you need advice.
Okay. Staff report, the last page, flip it's about four pages. After reading number one. Satisfactory ingress and egress to the property and proposed structures with reference to automotive, pedestrian safety and convenience of traffic flow and control. Do we feel that they're meeting that with what they presented tonight? Traffic studies, plans, so forth?
I believe for the plans, they were here before and also spoke to us. And they said that they were not gonna have a sprinkler system in there, that there was a firewall for the structure.
As far as safety? It could. Even though I'm a builder, I don't build multi, you know, complexes. So at some point sprinklers are required, but possibly not in this application. Let's see. Would it be appropriate to ask him a question at this point, or are we backing up too far?
I'm gonna defer to your attorney on that one.
Okay. So Sharon, if you can hear me, Sandra has a question about would sprinklers be required in this application that they presented?
I have not, Shannon, I haven't heard you close the evidence. And so you can ask questions. If I admit that sometimes the, the sound hasn't been great, but I didn't hear you formally close the evidence.
No, we have not formally closed it, and we will need to do that prior to making any motions, correct?
That's right. So until you do that, you can ask anybody questions that you need to.
Okay, so at this point, I'd ask if you can step up and possibly answer her question for me.
Yeah, thank you very much. It's, it's a very good question. So truly, these are townhomes. They will be built like any townhome you've ever been inside. So they will not include a fire sprinkler system because that is not required for a townhome in North Carolina. We will build them with multiple points of ingress and egress. And most importantly, the two-hour firewall between each unit to provide sufficient time for, in the event of an accident, everybody to vacate the units.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good question.
So do y'all wanna go through these one at a time and make sure we don't have any more questions before I close evidence? Possibly. We'll just come back and start over. Okay. Anybody have anything else for number one? Okay. Provisions of off-street parking loading areas were required with reference to the economy, noise, glare, odor, reflects, effects of the special use of adjoining properties. So basically, how do we feel like this would affect the adjacent property owner? Would it be anything abnormal for if something else got built there?
Water applicable and that?
Could be. For sure. Problem we have with this is unless Jeff can help us is we're neither, none of us up here is hydro specialist for flood matters go, I don't think. So we're trying to live in here. We know that, you know, I was even a little concerned with party building theirs up. Because it, you know, anytime you build it up, it changes the main flow when it does flood. So, and that's yet to be seen what that's gonna do.
Yes, that process is very rigid and quantifiable, but you know, it's not an issue here. So we don't have anything to, again, as I said earlier, hang our hat on regarding
Okay.
flood other than everybody recognizes that'll increase the amount of runoff, that density of development, but the impact, you know, it's just not quantified, so it's not.
Okay.
What will the storm runoff impact? I know they said they've not got that done yet, but um, how will that be dealt with? With it being in flood line and water share?
I'm just checking with your attorney. And while Mr. Young does have an expertise in this area, it, it becomes him presenting evidence. So if he's going to vote, he can't be answering these questions.
Okay, okay. Fair enough. Okay. So, um... So, on that, let's see, well, can I even answer her question then?
You can just still discuss and you can ask the engineer, applicant's engineer.
Okay.
It's just because it's a quadrupedition process.
Okay.
You can't rely on his
Okay.
expertise.
Okay, gotcha. So if you would step up and one of you and give us, see if you can answer her question at the major ability.
I'm sorry, repeat the question, please.
Um, with, y'all haven't got the storm runoff study yet. So with water runoff around here, in the last probably ten years, we don't get a half inch of rain, we get four inches. And we've got a clay-based soil, so it doesn't absorb and it runs off.
So you may have misunderstood. We've done the, the studies, we've actually completed the stormwater engineering at the site. We just haven't taken it to permit yet. Generally, you know, that, that, that step, the engineering approvals are done after planning approvals are, are, are complete. And so that's the reason for that. But we, we've actually designed a stormwater management system that meets all NTTQ requirements for detention and to, for water quality that removes eighty percent of the suspended solids. So essentially the water's coming into our stormwater collection system from the impervious surfaces and releasing it at a, at a pre-development rate. So the runoff coming through the watershed shouldn't be coming off any, any faster than it does now.
And those will be regulated and watched by the state with that permit.
Absolutely. Operation and maintenance agreements have to be recorded with the deed and things of that nature, so. Yeah, you're welcome.
Daniel, since, since the county is no longer enforcing or overseeing the watershed rules in town Mills River.
Right.
We are doing that now in-house.
That's correct.
And it was looked at to make sure that those rules are, are in line.
I'm gonna defer to Mr. Malicek on that. I didn't have review to plan for that.
So only a very small portion of this property is in a locally reviewed watershed that runs to the Mills River. The rest is in a state-reviewed area. Basically, every part of the town has stormwater requirements. The central part are watersheds that we review locally. The far southern part and the northern part of the town are state-reviewed areas because we're considered an urbanizing area by the state. And they impose these additional requirements. So like the engineer talked about, it's detention, which is holding the influx of new stormwater back and releasing it a slower rate and also removing sediment from the water. There's a specific page in the development plan. It's attachment B, and if you look at the bottom right corner of the sheet, it's C dash five-point-zero grading and stormwater plan. And it may be difficult to see on this small size, but there are a couple areas where it says proposed stormwater BMP, storm tech chambers. BMP stands for best management practices. Basically, a stormwater control device. And storm tech chambers are underground stormwater chambers that, again, detain the stormwater for a period of time and also remove sediment. But to your question about the watershed, because the majority of this property is not in the watershed, it's the state's responsibility to review.
If they're gonna have the capsules under the ground to capture storm runoff water, has the fire department looked at that yet?
I'm, I'm not sure why they, why they would, but I don't follow.
Well, in case animals or heaven forbid, children get washed down, the stormwater drains during storms, you know, so that they would know how to deal with them.
There's no rules and regulations at the local level that cover that. I mean, I, I would defer to the applicant's engineer to basically state whatever the state standards are. But I mean, usually all stormwater, water inlets have grates, you know, of a certain size and certain width to prevent that type of thing from happening, but I'm not an expert in that area.
So yeah, I think Michael described it adequately. Everything's got grates and covers and there's no way a child could get in there. You know, they'd have to have special tools to get the grates off and everything. And there is access into the chambers anyway for maintenance purposes. So if somebody were to get sucked down through a, a gap that wide, I don't know how they would, but there's ways to get in there and get it.
I'm just looking at it for a safety concern and, you know, educating for us too.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, that's all, you know, this, this is standard stuff. It, it's probably implemented at a large majority of sites that you, you know, are, are, are out on commercial sites. And you're probably not aware of it because it just goes in the storm crate on the side of the road and then it's all under paving on a lot of large commercial sites. So, but there's, there's, you'll see manholes and things that are access risers that go down into the units that they use for maintenance that are, that are big enough for a person to crawl down and in and get to. That, that for maintenance purposes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else about two? Okay, three, utilities with reference to location, availability and capacity. Anything on that? No? Buffering with reference to type, location and dimensions. Mr. Malicek, I would assume that all that is met in the plan?
Yeah, all the setback requirements on the property boundary are met. And some additional landscape buffers were actually added after the planning board review in response to their comments and staff comments.
Okay. Five, playgrounds, open spaces, yards, accessways, pedestrian ways with reference to location, size and suitability. Anything on that? Okay. Building structures with reference to location, size and use. Mr. Malicek, it meets all our height requirements.
There were actually some building spacing concerns that, again, were brought up in the planning board meeting. The ordinance is a little strange. Basically, if you go above a specific height, then the building spacing increases. But those were all addressed in the revised plans and everything's compliant in this submission.
Anything else? Number six. Okay, would we make a motion to close evidence at this point?
Let's go back to number two. The parking lots, you wanna come up and answer my question?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
So parking lots, I guess, will be lit?
Yes, yes.
Overhead lighting?
Yes, and during the planning board meeting, we committed to doing downlights to prevent any type of light pollution.
Okay.
So we're very focused on that and understand the concern.
And that, that, would that be a condition of this permit? That you would do that?
The downlights, yes, we'd, we'd be more than happy to do that. We've already started working on it. Thank you.
Anything else? The motion to close evidence?
I'll make the motion and close the evidential part of this hearing.
I'll second that motion.
Jeff, second, all in favor? Okay, so... So basically, we're down to the point of voting on each one of these, correct? We'll start with number one. Somebody wants to read them again, they're more than multiple two. Do we feel like, one, they have met all of number one? Egress and ingress, pedestrian safety, so on and so forth?
Well, I was obviously critical of some of the numbers that I was seeing only because I'm not aware of where they come from, although I seem, you know, prepared by an expert. But it, to your point, Mayor Gaunt, it didn't take into account. Well, they've already broken ground on what we've purchased a taproot property, but it's two, three hundred acres and another residential development. And just knowing the area, having lived here, I suspect the majority, if not majority, those folks will be doing a lot of their retail business in Mills River. I think that's a concern that we'd be doing a service to the citizens Mills River if we didn't fully have taken into account what the conditions would be in just a year or two from now. Not just this proposed, the one that's already broken ground or under construction now.
Okay. So do we vote on one? Start at this end, Sandra, number one? Yes. Yes.
Shannon? Excuse me. You, you, you basically need to vote to either, you know, they've met or have not met this. And either way, somebody needs to state, you know, some type of evidence as to what you're backing that up with.
Exactly. Everybody understand if we, if we basically deny this warrant, you gotta give adequate reasoning for it.
Can, can we add? Can, can we ask Sharon if we are able to consider what is happening down the road?
Absolutely.
Randy, I didn't hear any evidence that was factual. I mean, I, I don't, I didn't hear evidence about the numbers down the road or anything like that. But just the fact that that is happening. If you wanted, if you wanted to take into account what you all know, then you need to put that on the record and give the applicant the opportunity to address it. But, but you, you have to consider only what was, you know, put into evidence tonight.
So we know that the county has approved for taproot up to six hundred and eighty units. Is, is that right? Is that somewhere in the neighborhood, six hundred? So are we able to consider that as our personal knowledge, as evidence? That what's going on, what could happen down the road since they have already been, they already have approval from the county for X number of units?
So that's a very close question. I think i- if you do want to consider it, you probably can, but you need to give the applicant an opportunity to address that because it wasn't in evidence during, when the evidence was open. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Do we have to open up?
You'd have to reopen the evidence, yes.
Okay, so.
What if they can't give that evidence today?
You certainly can recess this, this hearing and reconvene it at a later date without having to go through all the notice process again.
Okay. So let's reopen the evidence and give the applicant a chance to on and at least let him know what we know. Is that fair enough? Yes, come forward. We need a motion to reopen the evidence. Somebody give me a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Jeff, thank you. All in favor? Okay, so Randy, give him what you know.
So I guess the taproot dairy project is, is not in the town over which across the river. So I guess the county had initially approved them to be up to six hundred and some odd housing units. Single family, multifamily type units. So is that gonna, would, how would that equate into your traffic study at that point? Because that would be the closest grocery store.
Yes.
Would probably be right in front, front of this development we're talking about.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's a great point. And I'll ask Colin to help me answer this. But it is worth noting that during our traffic study, we did reach out to NCDOT. So they're aware of our proposed development and certainly probably took that into consideration. But Colin, you want to speak on behalf of your communication with them?
Right, we, we were not made aware that this other development would have an impact on Jeffress Road. Not sure if they would use Butler Bridge out to Bolton Highway or if they would wind around on Jeffress Road. But we would have to get with the county and find out, you know, that traffic impact study and see if they had assigned any trips to Jeffress.
If I may add, I mean, the impacts we're talking about in the traffic study would be related to NCDOT roads, correct?
Correct.
If, if there were any impacts, right? So as we come before you tonight, we are not asking that our traffic impacts would be the responsibility of Mills River. That's, it's not the case. We would work with NCDOT to answer any questions they have as they overlay the traffic studies. And that would be a developer responsibility as well as the state responsibility.
Everybody.
Sandra, can I remind you to use your microphone, please?
Is everybody, anybody else have any question for, we still got evidence open? The thing to this trafficker.
That we are allowed to ask for more evidence.
At this point? Yeah, we've opened it back up. I would ask that, that with, with the taproot dairy, would they, so there's already gonna be traffic studies done on that project that potentially could be reached out and grabbed in a few days.
Potentially, yeah.
Potentially. Or that, would those have been done by a private entity like yourself? Okay. And you didn't by chance do those?
No.
Okay. Anything else? All right, I need a motion to close evidence, but.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Randy. Second. Thank you, James. All in favor?
Can I just clarify for myself? You're closing the evidence again. Are you going to ask him to get this information and come back? Because if you are, then you might as well leave your evidence open and recess.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
I, I would like to ask him for that.
You would?
Yes.
Okay.
I would also like to see about an impact on the schools with six hundred and something homes going in on taproot. And then this also.
I would refer to Sharon on that one, is that even anything we can take into consideration? The schools.
I believe that it would be under the standards that are in the statute, the general statute, that your findings have to include. I'm trying to get down to it, but have to include, you know, the, the general best interests are safety in the town.
Okay.
And I, I believe that would be part of it.
Okay.
That would fall under spirit and intent, wouldn't it?
I believe that it would.
So Sue, you, you need that in a motion for us to ask for these specific things?
It does not have to be in a motion. You just, as long as the applicant is clear on what you're asking for.
Exactly.
So specifically to number one, do we need to make an amended motion to include more traffic studies?
There is not a motion on the floor yet.
Yeah, when we read these out, it's, we're gonna be yay or nay pretty much for it. And if it's a nay, you gotta give a, a reason why. As we read these down, these fact of finals.
If, if I'm understanding correctly, and Sharon, please weigh in on this. If you're asking for more evidence, you do not want to go forward and vote at this point.
No, exactly. We would need to recess the meeting until further, at future date.
Until you got that further evidence.
Yes.
And Shannon, my suggestion is that you do make a motion to recess the meeting for the purpose of getting what, and specify exactly what you need.
Okay. Perfect, place perfect.
Shouldn't we go on through all six of them before we?
Yeah.
Because we don't want to come back.
Yes.
With one thing and then come back and then, and we want something else.
Exactly. Okay. Okay, so if someone would be to have the ability to write these down as we go, Sue's working on. So y'all are asking them to come back with a traffic study with the taproot dairy project in consideration to the traffic that is gonna turn down Jeffrey's Road and potentially Cardinals for some reason? Is that correct?
Yes.
What you're thinking, Randy?
I'm thinking that part of this is probably outside of our wheelhouse because we don't maintain the roads, the state maintains the roads. And I'm, I don't want to tread on, I mean, I want to make things right, but I don't want to tread on somebody's property rights to do what they well within their right to do with their property, so. I'll, I'll go along with seeing more numbers on the traffic if that's what the council wants.
Okay, so we're asking for that. We're also asking for an impact study on the schools, correct? We want that to come back before.
Yes, with the schools here, both ends are going in those directions. And I think it would be important to look at that.
Does staff know if this particular piece of property would, would it only impact Mills River as a public school? Does any of those would never, I mean, I'm potentially, I guess. Yeah, Glen Marlowe, Glen Marlowe, I got you.
Do they both go to Glen, I mean, does Jeffrey's Road go to Glen Marlowe and Mills River or just Glen Marlowe?
Okay, okay. So are y'all looking for this elementary school or you like the middle school, high school?
Probably all three. Because they all converge into rugby and then to west.
The question is here, it, it, will that, will that impact study take into consideration of the taproot dairy project? And can we ask it to?
How, how does the applicant know about?
I don't.
Getting this information? I mean, is it, is it even possible?
Yeah, absolutely.
If it's helpful, guys. So we have been in touch with the principal, Hart, over at Glen Marlowe. He's well aware of the coming units and he's, he's said all the things that you'd expect a great principal to say. If you're looking for a quantifiable number on the amount of students that will attend that elementary school, I can absolutely provide that. I just want to make sure I understand what the deliverable would be when we have that number. So we can accurately collect the information.
Well, will that take in consideration the houses over on Tap Root also?
It's, it's a very good question. I mean, I, I guess I understand the, the traffic concern, right? But the, I can only control the, the units on our property. So I'm not, I'm not familiar with what schools own their zone for. But I would think the answer would be if they're zoned for that school, yes, it probably includes a specific growth number. But I, I'm sorry, I don't have an exact answer for you on that.
Thank you.
Okay, where we at? Asking for those two things and he might need a little bit of clarification on exactly what and where he's gonna get these numbers from. Or what we're actually asking to bring us back would be the, the question. I don't know that I know exactly what to tell him to bring me back. If staff can help with any experience in where these numbers would be generated, I'd be willing to listen.
I would suggest perhaps, yeah, but could probably have more, more experience than this, than, than this than any of us. But perhaps a letter from the principal or someone in the school administration stating the fact that based on the applicant's own data estimating, you know, half a dozen kids in the development, for example, that it would or would not have an impact on the school system. I mean, that, I think what's important to consider is if you're asking for additional evidence, the applicant needs to know exactly what you're asking for. And
Yes.
And, and a letter from an official like that, I think would probably satisfy the rule of evidence if this board is interested in seeing that.
Okay. Is that, would that be sufficient for you, Sandra, on the school information, a letter from the principal?
Yeah. Do they have figures that give, I know sometimes they have figures that say like, there's two and a half kids per household or, um, you know, can, can they figure that up on a development that big? And on the one here too?
I don't, I don't know.
I, I think it's important to, to remember that this application, you're, you're considering an application for the site on Jeffress Road. And while taproot there is, is a consideration, I, I don't think it's fair to this applicant to ask them to reassess that entire project. There are standards out there based on population, that the average family is, is a certain size, things of that nature. The gentleman, the applicant, can, I think can speak most clearly about who they expect to see within the development based on other experience. Whether or not that satisfies the, the question, I think is, is up for the councils to decide. I, I just want to, what caution the board to provide specifics to the applicants or if they can come, they can go back to drawing board and come back with information that will answer your questions.
Right. And Sandra, I'm gonna, I'll ask this. The reasoning behind the, the school would be overloading of the schools and potentially causing a safety issue? Or what, what would be the reasoning for needing that number?
Just as to how many kids could the school handle? And how many is this gonna put needing to go to school? Is, is there ample space for?
Ample space for.
Public welfare is one of our considerations that we have to ensure that the applicant's project is not detrimental or interest to property, property and, and also harms public welfare, which obviously if schools are overcrowded, then that would be
Okay.
By my estimation, uh, would be a detriment to public welfare. I think at least what I've here asking is obviously somebody authorized with the school system to say that the project that we're discussing tonight would not have an adverse impact on their particular facility or facilities. And likewise with the traffic studies, I think it's just asking the applicant's expert to look at what was submitted to the county. Because what I've learned from reading the one, this traffic study for this project is obviously they decide or they try to predict who's gonna turn with direction and also somebody's done a traffic study for the taproot development and determined that some folks are gonna turn Butler Bridge Road and head back towards Mills River. Now whether they went to the next intersection and tried to glean out who goes to the traffic signal that two eighty in Jeffress or who goes to Butler Bridge and two eighty, but that, that may already be parsed out. But most likely those numbers weren't captured in their study. And it could be significant because of the number of houses in the proximity to shopping and retail, yes, and whatnot right there at the intersection. That was part of their study. So I think that's pretty straightforward. Now I will ask a question. Mayor Gaunt, because we talked about going through those six criteria, which we would have to take action on individually. Uh, one of them was about, well, the number two, always clear or whatnot, unjoining property. And my tally has this evidence, evidentiary hearing. But if we are, am I still have to ask questions of staff just for information? Or is that gotta be conducted or asked during the evidentiary portion?
Well, we're still in the evidence portion, so yes, you can ask.
I thought we came out.
No, we, we did, we, we went back and then we're, now we're trying to decide. We're to the point now, we're trying to decide any questions that we need to send them to bring us back when we reconvene this.
Well, my question would be for Mr. Malcheck. I, I hope the, the Johnson property that's now surrounded by the proposed development, is there any special buffering? I didn't glean it out from the plans. Is either one required or two, has it been offered up as a, as a?
I didn't glean it out from the plans, uh, is either one required or two, has it been offered up as a, as a. I've lost, um, vocabulary, but anyways, is it being offered as an option to, uh. To try to reduce some of these, uh, anticipated impacts from a high density development next to a single family.
The only thing I can require is what's in the ordinance, which is a ten, ten foot landscaped evergreen buffer. And that's what's provided on the plans, including around that property.
That's around any major subdivision?
It, it's what's for this multi-family development.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, did the planning board come up with anything on that? Did they make a suggestion that there would be more buffering landscape wise on that property?
That didn't come up in their comments and that buffer, I believe, was already provided around that property. I, I'd have to look between the two plan sets, but I think there was additional buffering, um, between the subject property and, and the church in one specific area. But the applicant's also allowed to use existing vegetation in place of a buffer, so if there's already. A vegetative screen, if you will, um, the, the buffering of, or additional plantings are not required. But that wasn't a specific plan we're coming.
So speaking personally, I would, I would be lobbying for a condition. If it's not already built into existing vegetation on the joint landowners property or, uh, it's not already accounted for, but between this, uh, proposed development and the adjoining landowners. And I don't necessarily know exactly what that needs to be, but, uh, I would, I would offer that to my fellow council members that. If this were to move forward, I think it's not in reasonable condition to place on it, that especially for the Johnson property that's surrounded. That there be a robust buffer to offset some of the noise, dust, layer, both during construction and post-construction.
In reading through these six, does anybody see anything else that they would like them to bring us back? And then we're gonna tighten down the language that Sue may have already written down for us. And make sure it's okay before we send them back to get it for us.
Uh, one question I might have from Mr. Bassnight, it was just mentioned in passing, but I guess, uh, a condition of acquiring a church property was, uh, connection to the sewer and. Uh, cause you'll be extending utilities to your, uh, project, uh, has, is it just assumed that there's sufficient capacity with the. Metrophone Surge District for the church as well? We, you provided letters obviously for your development, but obviously hand and glove will be, the church will be linking one. I didn't know if there was, I don't know what gallons per day they use in a church setting, but nonetheless, I just didn't. Due diligence require us just to make sure that the church is gonna be hooking on if this comes to fruition, that, that we have documentation that says that. There's sufficient sewer service to the church.
So, uh, for clarification, we are connecting water to the church. We're bringing water to the church. They actually already have access to the sewer. They're currently using a septic leach field, but the sewer line already runs through the church property. Um, you bring up an interesting point about water capacity in the area. Without understanding what the future plans are for the church, it would be challenging for us to do that. But we have the full intent to run it right there so there, it is available for them to connect when the time is right for the church and it, it meets their planning goals.
And that would be a two inch line?
Running through their margin.
But it's a six inch line, wow.
Wow. But you're purchasing their drain field for their existing onsite wastewater, is that, uh, I get confused about. I thought you said the parcel, portion of their park, parcel that you were purchasing. Uh, for this, for this project, was there leach field or?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. You're asking me to make sure that the existing church facility, there's enough sewer capacity in there?
Well, I guess I did. They're, you're telling me they're hooked to sewer right now?
Uh, no, sir. No, can we go back to the, um, plan if you don't mind? I feel like I.
Are you buying their leach field?
Yes, sir, I am.
And then what are they gonna do for wastewater when there's apartments or, excuse me, towns on there?
So they will connect into the existing eight inch sewer line that goes through their property.
And, and sufficient capacity with MSD for them to go on.
Um, I, I get, you, so you would, I'm not sure. We haven't investigated that. Um, it could be done through a will serve letter to make sure. Is, is that what you'd like the deliverable to be?
Uh, it just seemed like they were part and parcel that if this, if this project moves forward, then there's gonna be additional.
Yes.
Discharge from the church facility. And you did provide all the documentation from city water, municipal water and public sewer. And I thought, well, I didn't know until your presentation night that the sewer connection with the church was gonna be. A, a component of this project and so just as due diligence.
Yeah, definitely, okay.
I can offer unequivocally, the state has capacity for the church. We, we get, uh, allocation from the state on a daily basis. For tens, hundreds of thousands of gallons, they've got ample capacity. Uh, and I can, you know, we could. We, we can't apply for an allocation for the church and that's the only way I know from a legal standpoint to give you documentation about that. I guess the church could apply for allocation, but I don't.
But, and, and Mills River residents are acutely sensitive to that, only because we're served by a portion of their, uh, sewer system. Of course, it's pumped under the river behind Brock Point Industrial, so that's sort of our bottleneck.
Right.
And there's only limited capacity, what they can pump under the river.
At pump station.
And so while they have capacity at the waste treatment plant, they don't have unlimited capacity to pump the sewage underneath the river and then gravity from there to Woodfin. So that's why I asked about, you know, because it is a finite amount available to this community, that reason.
Okay. So are you asking for an allocation from the church or?
Well, I thought it was just kind of a low hanging fruit that obviously there's a figure for gallons per day of wastewater for a church setting of.
It's fair.
Or whatever it is, but.
Relatively, it'd be really small.
And just a simple.
There's a school in there too.
They need, well, they, yes, but just to make sure that we cover our bases, that I thought that. Any engineer in that field, it's, you know, say they need five hundred gallons a day of capacity and then asking the Metrophone Surge District, is there excess capacity?
Church is probably around thousand, maybe fifteen hundred gallons per day to account for a Sunday. And, uh, from a, from a relative flow capacity, that's extremely small. And could not, in, in my wildest dreams, see how that could tax existing. If, if that taxes the pump station, you know, we've got big problems.
Boy, and then it may be something that's if not a will serve letter, but, uh, just a.
Perhaps we can have an additional conversation with them just to make sure that everything's running.
Sure.
Appropriately.
Sure.
That satisfy your.
Yeah, I just wanted to cover all our bases and, and.
No, it's a good question.
Like, so, anyways, why not?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Give it that, give it that.
Yes.
So it seems like we've got three needs we want brought back. Sue, would you like to read us what you've got one at a time and we'll agree or disagree on how they're verbally written?
I will read you what I have if Patty will confirm with me.
Okay.
Um, the first one is a traffic study taking into consideration Taproot Dairy's project and the impact on Jeffers Road.
Is that, is that sufficient for council?
I think that captures it.
Okay, so we'll give it that.
All right, the second one, uh, was, well, it was originally an impact study on the schools. But I think we're at a letter from the principal as to the impacts on the schools.
Do, do we feel like the principal would be the deciding factor here or, or is there somebody at a county level? School that. That would, uh, suffice this more efficiently?
I would say they'll get the school system's decision on here as the authority.
Versus the principal, right?
Well, I, I, they may say that.
They may say it's the principal.
Principal's the appropriate person, but I would let that decision be made by the school system.
Okay.
Who weighs in on that question?
So, uh, a, a letter from the superintendent.
Superintendent and if he, uh, sends it on to the, and suggests sending it to the principals of each school, then how do we find?
Would the fire marshal have anything to say about how many kids are in the school?
Uh, I would think that would be governed by state and the principal and everybody should be on board with the same number.
Okay.
There will be a max capacity if it can be inside the school at one time.
Okay, the third item, what, it was a will serve letter for the sewer based on, um, the church, Calvary.
Sewer or sewer and water? I'm sure waters, I mean, they work hand in hand or?
They probably already own municipal water, but.
Okay.
Uh, it, it's just apparently, or no, they're looking at. Sorry, I was, I remain confused on that, but, um. My concern is.
Sewer discharge?
Was for the connection to the sewer since that was a condition of this project moving forward.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
And I would offer that it doesn't, the applicant can determine what is sufficient evidence that there's suitable capacity.
Okay.
We need to specify just.
Yes. Mm-hmm. You need her, you need him to step up or are you getting him?
It, it's up to the board whether or not to even accept questions from the public at this time. It's really. It would be on the public comment period.
Yeah. Uh, I'm, I would have to refer to them. There was talking about, you may have stepped out. They're using down lighting. Okay. Let's say now. Oh, at the intersection. It's a end, you're talking about the safety of the intersection at two eighty and Jeffers? Oh. Gotcha. Yeah, we, we would take that into consideration possibly in, in, just as a town function. It wouldn't pertain to this directly. So. We, we've got those three. Uh, I would ask if the applicant is, uh, okay with reaching out and getting us those. And if they have a timeframe of when they think they could get it back to us to set it to reconvene this meeting.
Yeah, thank you very much for your comments and, and questions, and we are committed to finding the answers that you guys are asking for. I'll have to connect with my team and really understand what the timeline looks like, but we're gonna start first thing tomorrow.
Sure. Oh.
You, you need to recess to a specific date and time.
That's what I was.
If the applicant doesn't have the information and you choose to, you could recess again.
Okay.
When, I'm sorry, when is the, the next, um, hearing? Is it two weeks?
Uh, shoot, twenty fourth. Twenty fourth?
Let's do the twenty fourth. Does that work for everyone here?
Yes, so everybody can go reconvene until March twenty fourth. That, you need a specific time?
Yeah, we need, we need a motion to recess to, um, March twenty fourth at six thirty.
Okay.
And as Sharon recommended, uh, list those three items you've asked for as part of the motion.
Somebody make that motion for.
We'll make the motion that we recess this special, major special use permit. This should be twenty-two oh-one to March the twenty-fourth at around six thirty, right? With the conditions of, can you read them back to us so, so, so we can be?
I, I, I think, I think, um, you can tell me to put them in a minute.
If you'll put them in the minutes, the way we, the way you were read back to us a minute, moment ago.
Uh, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim, in all favor. Uh. Okay, we appreciate y'all's time. We look forward to meeting. We is on the twenty-fourth. Yes, absolutely. Uh, we're gonna take like a five minute recess. Everybody can use. Bathroom break. Daniel, get us back up and going and we'll. All right, moving on to see, uh, amendment to the subdivision works. The update from plans.
Good evening. So I'll keep the summary pretty brief. At the February twenty-fourth council meeting, Councilwoman Good, uh, raised the issue of. Active recreation areas and subdivisions being placed at the edge of the development and having an impact on existing homeowners. Uh, council discussed this at the last meeting and voted to send it to the planning board, uh, for them to discuss and for any recommendation or feedback. We did this, bring this to them at their March first meeting. They agreed with the concept that, um, as we pass of open spaces should not have a location requirement or it may not be necessary. Noting that flexibilities needed to preserve open space, especially even as we saw with the last property with the flood plain usually being at the corners or edges of the property. But they did agree that active recreation areas should be centrally located. And that was the extent of the guidance they were able, they basically came to a consensus on to send back to the board. They did consider multiple options, um, distance from the edge, whether, you know, if it's allowed at the edge. Was a fence, could a fence be required? Um, and then staff reviewed and researched some ordinances. City of Brevard had the most robust one, but again, there wasn't a specific example ordinance that had a distance requirement, although it's legally allowed. Um, but anyway, those are included in your packet. Um, there is no requirement. In terms of location, neither for minimum area for any open space or recreation area in the subdivision code today. Um, that's the, that's all I need to summarize, I think.
So Sandra, do you, you know, staff and. Possibly the planning board to develop some kind of a memo for that? That'd be the direction we would head, right?
Yeah, i- if you want to change in the subdivision regulations, a, a text amendment would be the first step. Um, if you would want to initiate that tonight, you know, I, I prefer a vote be taken so it's on the record. Staff would draft the text and take it to the planning board for review and then it would come to council for final consideration. And again, at, at any point in that process, the regulations can be changed based on feedback. You know, it's all just draft form.
I would like to thank the planning board for their input and their ideas and I would like to make a motion. That we send it to staff to draft. Is that what you said to send back to the planning board?
Uh, just that you want to dra- yeah, you're directing staff to draft a text amendment for. And again, I'd like clarity if it's just the active recreation area location requirement or if you want to include open space in that as well.
Just the active rec- recreation.
Um, Jeffrey, you up to speed on all this?
I am, cause I happen to be an applicant for this seat during those two meetings, so. So I would second that motion.
Okay. On favor?
Yeah, we. Can we have a little bit of discussion about it?
Good question.
But, you know, and I'm new, so bear with me, but.
No problem.
Uh, we had a motion and I seconded, but that should be time that we can liberate about that motion and when we take a vote, so.
No problem.
Uh, but yeah, I'm in concurrence with, uh, Ms. Good and would like to discuss this.
Okay. Me personally, uh. Uh, I feel like it's just gonna bring more work to the board of adjustments or grievances or hardships. Being that where our topography in Mills River ain't always flat. They're, just like you seen tonight, they pushed that thing all the way to the back corner. Now, right now, it doesn't affect any. But could it potentially like, there's no way for us to control that now, it's not internal, it's changing. But you're gonna see them. More than likely, their prime spot of land is somewhat typically in the center of the development. If we did, we want to give them plenty of room, you know. It would be awful for somebody to buy a track of land and there'd be a pond or something, and they want to use that for picnic areas, playgrounds and all, and it be a border, pond be a border. And them not be able to put it down there close to that, I feel like, um.
It don't have to be exactly in the center, just away from bordering properties on the edge.
But what, what's that magic number? I mean, do we have a magic number? Feet wise? Lot wise, how are we gonna, how are we gonna place it? What would be the number that we would say, we went there, we pull a tape and we say, okay, you are two hundred feet away from any adjacent property? Or what's the number?
Well, I rely on the staff and planning board to offer some alternatives, what other news files are doing or what they themselves have recommend. But I agree with you, Shannon, in the sense that oftentimes a common area in these subdivisions is throwaway land, it doesn't perk, it's too steep, it's flood plain, whatever. And they can't dictate what that, you know, my terminology, throwaway land is, but I think the developer does have the option if they want to make it passive or active. And if it happens beyond the perimeter and they look at our ordinance, if it includes some sort of condition that, uh, a requirement that if it's gonna be active, it can't be on their. Order or property line, then they have a decision to make, they're gonna offer amenity somewhere else on their subdivision, or are they gonna, uh, just leave it passive, but I don't think it. It doesn't eliminate the opportunity for developers to put a parcel that can't be developed. Or a portion of their land that can't be developed, they can still make it common area even if it's on the edge, but if they want to make it active, because I understand the motion, we're just talking about. Recommendations on, uh, how to relocate active off the perimeter of a property.
I'm o- I'm okay with it, as long as we don't specify that it has to be sent for the located or anything like that, as far as the active. Common ground goes, uh, a distance, and I don't know what that distance is. Uh, from the perimeter, uh, I would be okay with, but as long as, as long as we're not setting in stone where they have to locate it on, on the parcel property, I'm okay.
That sounds good, we're not looking to set it in stone, we just want it off the boundaries of other properties. If they could, you know, if it goes on the open space, you know, that's a different thing. But when you put it up next to other people's houses and stuff, seem to be where the problems arise from.
You brought up in the planning board or in the planning meeting that, you know, a slide developer would chunk off fifty feet and say it's the center. And so, yes, I think we need to also look at. Like a better buffer, like I think there's other wording than. One partial N or the center, um, you can, you worded it great the other day, so you can go again.
I mean, there's a, there's a couple of different methods I would look at, um, wh- what I'm hearing is. We don't want a general term that it can be centrally located, we want something definite, and I'll, I'll do some research and come up with that number. But are you also saying you want flexibility or it could be closer to the edge with, uh, like additional screening? And by screening, I don't mean like trees, I mean like an eight-foot solid fence, I mean, is that something? Because again, I don't want to see more variances either. And that's why I'm trying to create or, or what, what I would propose is creating a range of options, you know, where there would be a distance requirement. Or at least a minimum distance requirement, and then maybe if you're. I don't know, so much into that, then, you know, a fence would kick in or, or something like that, but in no case would it be. And I guess that's where I'm looking for a little guidance, and if you don't have it tonight, that's fine, I'll do research, but, you know, what's the absolute minimum? You know, e- even if, even if we were to require it to be fenced around the perimeter, and again, not all the way around, but on the adjacent boundary side. What's the absolute?
You know, because most of our complaints are, are, everyone has been mentioning noise, bouncing ball, this, that, and the other, so. You know, a little fence deflect that, and then if they build it now, twenty years from now, is that fence still gonna be there, you know? Depending on what it's made out of and if there's some kind of regulations to keep them that in place, possibly in that same.
And in the code now for landscaping buffers, there is a provision that it has to be maintained in perpetuity by the HOA. So in theory, I could go out, do an inspection, and if the trees are all dead on one side, it would be within the town's right to go back and, and. Make them replant, just like they would have to rebuild a fence that blew over.
Okay.
Um, but again, just to be clear, even with it being centrally located or pushed away from the edge, it will still be next, it will still be next to homes just within the subdivision development. Just want to be clear of that.
Exactly.
So are you looking for us to come up with a. Distance from the property line to give you now, or you, are you gonna give options?
Oh, I'll, I'll give options, and I mean, that's my job, and that, that's what I'll present to the planning board, I, I was just curious if there was, you know, an absolute minimum. You know, so someone had an idea tonight, you know, is a hundred, is a hundred feet away? Too much, too little, is fifty feet away with a solid eight-foot fence, not sufficient? I, I don't know, and if you don't have those answers tonight, that's completely fine, and we'll do research and, and look at what other cities do.
I, I, myself personally, I'd just soon to see options, which come up with.
I agree, there are like several options, and then what's. Best chances to keep it out of the order of the general. It's plenty of options.
Am I good with that? Move forward with that, okay? Anything else on that, we made a motion to.
The motion's already on.
Yeah, we got one, we gotta finish the second, right? So, all in favor? Okay, we need to look at the appointment of our council representative, the LGCCA. That was vacated by Mr. Schneider.
So as most of you will recall, uh, back at the organizational meeting in December, excuse me, there were a number of appointments to be made, and, and some of those have designated positions, for example. Uh, the LGCCA of the local government committee of cooperative action has a, a ex officio mayor spot, meaning the mayor always serves whoever's in that role. And then there was a, a second position as well from each municipality. Uh, right now, the, the second position is vacant with Mr. Snyder's resignation. Uh, so it's up to you folks to decide who you want to appoint to that role, they need quarterly. I don't know the day of the week, but it's, uh, quarterly, and the, the only involvement the town really has at the staff level is, um. The, the clerks rotate and take minutes at those meetings, I, as your manager, will go and attend to help answer questions and things of that nature. It's really, it's really an elected board's opportunity to come and speak with all the other jurisdictions in the county. What? Tuesdays at three every.
What was Roger's response, well, this wasn't Roger's only responsibility, was it?
No, he was on the Hendersonville Water and Sewer Committee, which is what you are now on.
Yeah. So is this the only one that's open?
That's right.
I would be interested in doing the LGCCA, and I would offer up my. Um, Land and Sky, if, if Jeff would be interested in that one.
I'm familiar with the council, Land and Sky Regional Council, so yes, I would accept that responsibility if the council wanted to appoint me to the San Francisco.
So, we need to make a motion for each one of those. I'm like a motion to.
I'll move, I'll move that this council appoint Sandra Good is, uh, the second representative on the LGCCA.
The second? I'm gonna need one for Jeff to take Sandra's spot with my hand in the sky.
And that's the Land and Sky Board of Delegates.
I make a motion that we elect Jeff Young for the Land and Sky Board of Delegates.
Wait a second.
Thank you.
Thank you, James, all in favor? Aye. Staff cover up? Okay, consideration of our part-time financial position.
This item was discussed at your last meeting, um, I have, I have recommended and requesting a part-time position to assist. Uh, with financial issues associated with the American Rescue Plan, uh, just as a summary for the public, again. The town, uh, is set to receive two point three million dollars, uh, that money is to be distributed out in response to the pandemic. And so, I've set a five criterion. At this point, we have not, um, we've not adopted the policies required to distribute these funds, a lot of those are being developed or have already been developed by the school government. So it will be a matter of modifying those to fit the town of Mills Rivers, uh, needs. Um, so this person would assist with that work as well as the, uh, financial reporting and monitoring of all of the ARPA expenditures. Throughout the lifetime of this grant, uh, which the money has to be obligated by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. And fully spent by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. Now, I had requested thirty-five dollars an hour for up to one thousand hours a year. Um, I do not see that it would take one thousand hours a year, that's just a common threshold we use, because beyond that, you. Are subject to paying benefits and all of those sorts of things, so. Less than one thousand hours, the employee would, would pay social security tax, but no other benefits. Um, so again, in summary, it's, it's directly tied to the ARPA funding, it may be paid for out of ARPA funding. Uh, we're not the only folks in this boat, Henderson County is looking at doing the same thing, Flat Rock is, has already signed a contract with, uh, someone to administer, assist with them administering the money. Uh, so again, it's just not a unique, uh, position to be in, this is a large amount of money with a lot of red tape, uh, that we need to make sure we're following.
No, uh, last week Randy had some concerns with it, uh, I don't know if any of those have changed or. More concerns of it rose from it.
So Daniel, I misplaced my list that had all the policies that we needed in place before we spend our money, you don't have it?
No, I can pull it up in just a moment, I don't have it in front of me. Okay, so. At a minimum, we're going to be required to do. The eligible use policy, allowable costs and principles, policy, non-discrimination, records retention, conflict of interest, financial management, and internal controls. Um, depending upon how the money is spent, uh, it's possible we would do a program income policy, that is to say, if we. Establish the loan program, any proceed, proceeds that come from that have to be addressed in this policy. We will very likely do procurement policy, uh, that would allow the town to. Purchase things. Uh, with ARPA funding, uh, property management policy, if the town uses ARPA funded funds to acquire property or make improvements to property. We have to have a policy regarding management of that, uh, that property. Subaward policy, if the funding is passed on to another organization, uh, to provide a service that the town could provide. Then both the recipient as well as the town has, uh, additional steps they have to take in terms of the management of those funds and reporting. So we have to have a policy for that as well. And then uniform guidance is, I won't get into that, that's, there's a lot of detail for that, but anyway, those are the specific policies.
Those five right there, we're looking at right there, how many of those policies do we not have in place at this time for the town?
All of them.
So we don't have a record retention policy?
We have a record retention policy, but not specific to ARPA fund.
What's the difference?
The federal standards that they were gonna require us to adopt are different than what the state records are.
Hell.
I don't, I haven't compared the two, but I, but the one's federal and one's state.
The, the state retention policy does not refer to federal grant retention. So we can't change the state's policy, so we have to adopt a second policy.
But that, but we pay, don't we pay yearly for somebody to retain or to cloud our records and all that?
For ordinances and, and resolutions and.
Okay, and then you keep all the, uh, the records for how long?
It varies for the state retention schedule, it varies by the record, for example, zoning permits are, are required to be kept. Six years, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. Um, special use permits are forever, uh, you know, it depends on type of record, for the ARPA funds, I believe it's five years after the fund is spent, does that sound right to you?
Yeah, five years after the closeout of the grant. Um, so five years after twenty twenty-six.
And how many, how many of these policies, now these five here are the, is the school government working on for?
They're working on all of them.
Oh, yeah.
Several of them have been prepared.
And then whenever they gave you the. Their form with the policy on it, you could just tweak it a little bit to suit the town of Mills River.
So, yes, we, we need to obviously insert the words town of Mills River in the policies, but I think there's a difference between making a few. Few estenographic changes to the words than there is actually learning and understanding what those policies are requiring us to do. And, and that's what this other person would do, is they would learn this information inside and out. And make sure that we're following all of the rules, because it's, it's easy to copy and paste from one policy to another. But not understanding what those policies are actually saying is very important, and we need to get the hearing involved to a certain extent.
So how important are these policies gonna be since the federal government changed guidelines about up to ten million dollars is gonna be exempt, that you weren't really gonna have to. Be as careful about documenting where the money went to.
We still.
Mills Rivers' share of that money is gonna be way less than what, what, what the federal government says is okay to use.
So all these are required for, um, any, any expense that we want to do, claiming that ten million dollar deduction.
I just feel like the safeguarding of, of the money after it's spent could potentially be worth the thirty-five dollars an hour that we spend on it. Because we don't know where this money's going yet, of course, and we don't have it earmarked for anyone. But say if it goes to a, we decide to fund a nonprofit that's eligible. And then they elect not to use the money in the proper way, and somebody ain't overseeing that. And that money will be spent, we have really no recourse at this point to get that money back. And then therefore the federal government will say, well, that didn't fulfill the obligation of the policy, so now you've got to pay us back that money, so we're out two votes. Is the way I understand, now, will that ever happen? I have no way of knowing. But this person would be like an insurance policy that that didn't happen.
I guess my confusion comes in that, uh, it seems like these two things are married, the adoption of the policies and then bringing this person on board. While it sounds like the person that you want to bring on board, the main thrust of their. Work is gonna be implementing and monitoring and tracking how these funds are spent, so. Uh, what I'm trying to get around to saying is that, uh. what I'm trying to get around to saying is that it sounds like the policies are going to be rather boilerplate and it is sort of a a clerical exercise to go in and put Town of Mills River and maybe tailor some other things so that they are applicable to here. We could adopt those. But what concerns me just as a consumer of newspapers and other medias, like I saw in lightning this week where Anderson County has a list was developed by staff that's sort of iterated what the commissioners had already pointed out his needs, and then they brought up other things that the staff are aware of. But I thought, really, if I was applying for the position, I want to know, am I applying for two big projects that are million dollar each? Or am I applying to track thirty-five projects and ten different, you know, nonprofits? So it's like, it sounds like we're not moving off, getting off the starting line with the policies because we don't have this person. But it sounds like it's not a heavy lift to get the policies to a rate where we could adopt them. And then, but I really like to see, at least until somebody can educate me better, I'd really like to see us start working on what type of projects will be considered with the money that's been allocated in the river. Whether you follow Anderson County's lead, where they kind of develop their list internally, or some of these other municipalities that are actually having public input to say what what would you like to see? But I really like to sort of.
Well, we'll take into consideration that, you know, the prior council set aside seventy-five thousand for the fire department employees that worked through the COVID period. Well, you know, that's, that's there. We still have it, of course, but we can't give that money to them until we get our, all our policies adopted in an open meeting. And we don't even have the staff to draft those. And Lee hadn't come out with these policies, as I'm aware of yet.
So it 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 goes beyond, again, just the clerical exercise of of typing up the policies. We have a very limited staff as it is. Everyone is very busy as it is. This is a huge undertaking, processing this this information and distributing it after the community in the most efficient and most productive way possible. I like Mayor Gont's analogy of an insurance policy. That's really a good way to look at this. We can get these policies done, but it's going to take longer than it, we would bring somebody on board who had the time to dedicate to it. So if the town is okay waiting to utilize these funds, then then we can do that. I just want you to be aware that the deadline is December of twenty-four, which sounds like a long time away, but you know, and and it's not, it's just, it's right around the corner essentially. So we just need to make sure we're cognizant of the fact that if we don't bring someone on board, it all, everything is going to be delayed a little bit further. Which again.
From a staff level, do you think we, once we had policies potentially written, we might could work one or two of them in a meeting?
Oh, certainly. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we're not.
Even on our load per night?
Yes. Yeah, we're not gonna, we're not gonna try to get all of these adopted in one evening, and it would be over a course of several months probably. Because while while we have to go through the exercise of preparing them, you all have to go through the exercise of reading and understanding them and asking any questions that you might have. And some of these are going to be a little bit lengthy, so there'll be some questions. So it'll it'll take some time to get through it. Yes, and they have to be better by the, by the attorney. Ms. Shealy?
Um, so it sounds like, just for clarification, because it sounds like it's my stuff on the admin aspect of it, and it's more of a compliance officer. Because from what I'm understanding what you're saying, it's not only writing the policy, but it's making sure that we are compliant at the Town of Mills River going forward and the people that we give money to are compliant with what they have offered us as usage.
That's right.
For this money, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, I would think there wouldn't be many higher priorities than making sure we utilize those two plus million dollars left to fund. So I'm still a little buffaloed about why we're not moving forward and why it's contingent on hiring this person, where this person, I think, key role is in the implementation and tracking of it. And if the resources and the way of policies are already out there, why aren't we adopting those? And if there's no staff time, that tells me that there's everything, or everything else is more important than the two point three million dollars.
I'm going to say it's more important than two point three million dollars. As a mayor of this town, I feel like we're obligated to make sure that that two point three million dollars is, when is spent, is spent legal to the federal guidelines set forth. And what I'm hearing from staff is we don't have enough manpower or or women on board here to process all that in a, in a quick fashion. I mean, he's sitting here saying, you know, it's going to take months to develop these and get them adopted in open meetings. Where this other guy could possibly come in and get us a bunch of stuff ready within the next month or so. And we could move forward. And in politics, I just know that what we think of today is a priority to spend that two point three million dollars on months from now, that's going to change. And I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. But we do need to just keep that in consideration, even, you know, the money that was set forth by the, for the firemen. We, it's just saying that we can't do anything with it until all these policies are in place and adopted in openly.
Okay, two things. One, about seventy-five thousand, maybe I misunderstood in a conversation with town manager that now there's enough latitude where you can sort of backfill your operational expenses with some of this money. So I don't know if you could not pay seventy-five general funds.
So I'll refer to the managers since we're in open meeting and in public, everybody can hear. Would that be a possibility?
Yes, the funds can be used to, what the school government is referring to as supplanting your your regular expenditures. So rather than creating a separate fund, for example, for a project, what a lot of municipalities with this ten million dollar deduction, they're going to plug in their their receipts from the federal government into their operating budget, which in essence frees up your your general fund revenue to be spent on other things. So yes, that that is possible. In fact, that's what we were going to be recommending is that we take advantage of that revenue loss item, because that's how, that's how it frees up the the town from a lot of the other required steps. But again, the policies are required to 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 do even just that. And and to Mr. Young's point, we're certainly capable of doing policies themselves. But but again, we're very limited staff. We're very, very busy. You know, anything additionally we add to the workload is going to push something away. And Councilman Austin's, I think, is the only one here to remember this, but for a period of time, we did not have a planner on staff. And I have a long experience with with planning. Over a decade in that field, and I made mistakes left and right. And I owned up to every single one of them, and I don't want that to happen with this, with this work. I don't want to get a policy in front of you because we are pushing hard to get it done. And then we miss something. Have to go back and redo it. That's just not not good for anybody involved. So it's, it's not that we're not capable of doing this work. It's getting the insurance policy of having an extra set of eyes on it and someone else to help manage the whole process.
I'll say this, now, harsh amount of policies, but Daniel, you in the town manager's position, y'all are always calling each other up and saying, show me your ordinance. Or a lot of people probably called and said, you did a good job on the comprehensive plan. How about giving me some pointers, right?
Right.
So there's a lot of towns and municipalities that you probably know of that have a lot of these policies already in place. Can't you call them up and say, look, send me your human resources policy or your, or your one of the other policies on there. And then just in a short order of time, tweak it to Town of Mills River.
Certainly, and that's what we would do. We're not going to try to reinvent these things. I mean, the the school government's published several of them already. So again, we're not going to reinvent it. We're going to, we're going to take what they have. That's what we'll do.
So where we at, folks? Leaving it up to our staff. We have talent to develop them as they can, or we're hiring somebody? That's a question before us, as I said.
Well, maybe some more clarification helped me get past this. And that was simply that I was in the audience for the meeting where the town manager cited how many trainings that you and town clerk had to attend to get brushed up on these policies. And so it just seemed to me that 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 was the knowledge, rather than trying to now disseminate that to a brand new person that's new to the town, knew the whole process, that if it's not a heavy lift, that, you know, we need to get these policies moved, and that's obvious. And and I was trying to make two points. One, I don't think seventy-five thousand dollars being held hostage for this issue. The second was that apparently, yes, it is a cumbersome, complicated, changing program. Given that they've attended, lost half time has been devoted to learning these stuff. And so now, now we've got some resources and the way of policies that are in template form that can be tailored, sounds like relatively easily, so that they can go for their elected leaders for consideration and adoption. You know, and these things can happen concurrently. And I still think this council in this town needs to be developing a list, whether I say let's help internally first and put to the public or just open it to the public. But I think we need to determine, we need to determine where this money is going to be going. So we know how much of a heavy lift it's going to be. When we do start spending these funds, is it going to nonprofits? It's all going to be done on just one big project, you know, or like that, because it'll help me decide what our needs will be to track the insurance policy to make sure that the money that we spend or at least that we commit to, that we'll get reimbursed for it. We'll see the funding. So that was kind of, it just seemed like the resident knowledge was here. And apparently, it came at a certain cost to this town to have our staff trained up on this stuff. And now to say, we just want to bring somebody from outside, train them up, then start doing policy. And it just seemed like, I don't know why we're not going to do policies. And then I understand, I recognize the need that we have to have somebody implement, monitor, and track these funds. But it just seems like everything's being, I had said held hostage like seventy-five, but it seems like everything's held up, like until this position is approved, we're not doing anything. And I just don't know that that has to be the case. And I think it should be a higher priority. Maybe something does have to be put on a back burner for a few weeks. But you know, again, manager and consultation with the mayor or the council can say, you know, it comes at a cost, and it's going to be, we're not writing any zoning permits for a month or something. But, you know, then we can make an intelligent or an informed decision. Without that information, it just seems to me, sitting here, I've been, see why we're just all gommed up and just can't move off this. And I think there's several things we can be doing.
We do have several organizations looking to get some ARPA money, like Merillak is one of them. And, um, maybe some of these coming along through here, you know, that money, you know, they might apply for that too. But we need to make sure that it's done in the right way, because if it's not, ultimately, we will have to pay it back. And Daniel said he will be overseeing all to make sure that everything's good. So that's another set of eyes on it.
Okay, I'm going, I'm going to ask staff. How long do you think, with your given time, would it take y'all to implement the policies for us to get rolling on that end of it? If we go that way, your best guess. I mean, I know it's just a guess.
My best guess would be September.
So if we hired someone, what would you figure would be the timeframe?
I would think we could get them done by the end of the fiscal year, June thirtieth, depending upon, of course, council's consideration. Because like I said, some of these are somewhat lengthy. And, you know, you guys want to make sure that you understand before you make the decisions.
And those, all of those, if I'm understanding, need to be in place before we distribute any money out.
Yeah, until before money can be distributed. And it doesn't mean that we can't, you know, start doing public workshops or something like that, decide how the money is going to be spent. As far as actually money going out the door, yes, those are what have to be completed.
And I do understand this person would be just part-time. So if he gets through the policies parts of it, then he can step aside and wait we get ready to disperse and start tracking that going on.
That's right.
So I guess it's, is this council willing to wait till September to, and and then start developing stuff that we could potentially spend this money on, or what nonprofits would be, we feel like would be eligible, or however you want to word it, in the meantime? Or do you feel like we'll be needing to disperse money the next, early next fiscal year?
No, if the cost is sixty, ninety days, then that's unacceptable, given the window that the town managers already outlined. But, you know, it is what it is. But that's, you know, like I said, if I need to make a decision based on something, and that's something, I mean, staff's telling us that it's going to take two, three months at least. And if that's the case, that's the case. And so, you know, I recognize that and, you know.
And they've also said that the funds to hire the person can be paid out of the ARPA funds, so it's not coming out of our tax base.
I saw Anderson County had like two hundred fifty and three hundred thousand for similar positions in their wish lists. Not thirty-five thousand.
But they're dealing with a lot more money, too. I guess there's a reason for that.
Yeah, ten times.
Yes.
Since I made the next think about it, I will move that this council authorize the town manager to pursue hiring a part-time individual thirty-five dollars an hour for a thousand hours for the administration and may for purposes of implementing the ARPA funds.
I got a motion. I hear a second.
I'll second.
Any more discussion?
Do you have, do you have somebody lined up to do it then?
I have reached out to a couple of folks, yes.
They would be able to do it or?
Any more discussion before I vote?
Would we be able to set firm timeline? We're told by the end of the fiscal year.
I can remember that date.
Make sure that it's. You're, you're welcome to do that, but remember, you're putting yourselves under a timeline as well, because.
Give me a lot of meetings to get these things through.
I mean, we can have them written, but I can't guarantee the council is going to have them all pass.
I'll reiterate the same thing, put it back on me. But I can't think of any more higher priorities for this council and the staff just to make these funds happen. That means extra special call meetings, and that's the price of implementing ARPA funds. It'd be a disservice to the town if we didn't use those funds.
Any more discussion?
Since, uh, the fire department thing was approved in November, would it be would it be y'all's wish that we go ahead and and send them that money out of the general fund and reverse the general fund later from the ARPA money? Is that correct?
I'll need to speak with your attorney about the proper way to do that. I'm not going to say it's not a possibility. I just need to speak with your attorney before.
Because that money we were wanting to do for Christmas, not bonuses for them, and and here it is. It's going to be.
Didn't say which Christmas.
Yeah. Uh, so I'm gonna at this point, I'm going to call, I've got a first and a second. Can I have a vote? All in favor? I'm going with aye.
Aye.
You still deliberating, you guys? No, okay, okay, I got you. Okay, good deal. Okay, so we're moving on. Farmers market discussion. Welcome to our world.
No, just go. I gotta go home with it. Go ahead. Hi there. My name's Stephanie Moore. I'm the social media director for Mills River Farmers Market. I have been such for three years. It's my pleasure to address you all for the first time. I'm not a resident of Mills River. I live in Weaverville, but Mills River has always been my home. Out of the twelve farmers markets I have attended with my business, it's the only one that made the cut. Y'all got something special out here, and it is my intention one day to move here. Everybody don't put the damn townhouse. But and well, everybody comes up to this podium and asks you for things, and I'm going to do. But and well, everybody comes up to this podium and asks you for things and I'm going to do something a little different. I'm going to extend something to you, an invitation. I would invite each and every one of you to come and meet your constituents and come and meet the people that you represent. We're nice folks, we're friendly. I'm not going to call you out for being council people. We just want to meet you and frankly, it's a great place to hang out, guys. There's live music every week, there's fun people. Opening day is May seventh. We are open from eight to noon every Saturday from the beginning of May through the end of October. And it would be our great pleasure to host you. So I would ask that you do that. If you haven't done so already, I would also encourage you to please follow us on Facebook and Instagram, Mills River Farmers Market. You get a lot of information that way, not just for us, but for like general agricultural purposes. And if I do say so myself, it's a pretty good time. Thank you very much for your consideration for property and funds. I understand through our board meetings that that has been something discussed. I look forward to seeing that implemented. Joe and Linda have been great friends of mine for many, many years. And I am very excited to get to see them kind of retire a little bit, if God help them, out of the roles that have been so strenuous on their bodies and minds and spirits for so long. People like me and Jenny and others of the younger generation look forward to stepping into those roles and working more closely with you in the future. As someone who turned thirty last January and who got married two and a half years ago, I see a place like Mills River as my ideal scenario for when I want to have a family. I see its rural and bucolic nature as something to strive to maintain and emulate. Especially given the last few years of insecurity and anxiety and everything else that's come with it. This place has represented a sort of sanctuary for me that I didn't think existed. I moved here from the Raleigh area eight years ago and I will never go back. Places like Mills River maintain a certain level of this royal status in my head of what I moved to the mountains to experience. And I'm very grateful for y'all and efforts you've put forth for preserving that status. Thank you for your time. It was nice to meet all of you.
Thank you.
All right. What I'm here for. Yes. All right. So I am a past vendor. I am a past board member. And I am a current patron of the Mills River Farmers Market. So what the market brings to just us, period, is a showcase of local talent within a fifty mile radius. We have been, yeah, as a growth, that's true. So to do that and to exponentially grow every single year that the market has been open tells you who we are, eh, and what we want to show everybody. So funding for the actual market, whether that's the admin position that we need there. So that what, what the Brittons are asking for is roughly about two cents per person in this town. I would be willing to give more than that. Now, I know that they have also been discussing property, a permanent place. Mills River Elementary, where I went to school, has been fantastic, but they're starting to outgrow that. Did you go to market last year? Cause I mean, it's starting to wind around. I mean, we have everything from farmers to processors like myself, because I can jam and jams and jellies. That was, that was what I sold there. We've got a tea maker. We've, I, I mean, just anything that you can, there's, there's beef, there's fish. It really showcases everything that, oh, what was our big act you're talking about? The seven, yes, because we are just piggybacking off of that. Because he's talking about big business. Bring it, bring big ag, keep big ag. We need them too. But we also need to bolster and fund our small local farmers, processors. I mean, I buy stuff from Flavor First and I cross that and I make spaghetti sauce. I mean, can't sell it at market because it's a different category, but I can do my jams and jellies with my certified kitchen. That's local. I'm, I'm right behind Sierra Nevada. I'm North Mills River. So to keep that, to keep our hobbies, our side hustles, our full-time jobs. This is the best way to move forward. We need your help. The market needs your help. We need funding. Grants are great. But as you're seeing, even in your own governmental structure, when you deal with federal grant money or just federal money, period, there's a thousand hoops you gotta jump through. There's a ton of red tape, it takes forever. And you've got to go down to the absolute penny. There is compliance involved with this. I'm not saying that we're not going to be compliant with the money, with the help that you'd be willing to give us. It's just the fact that there's just less work. You can oversee us all you want. I would be happy for that. I want to show you what I can do. I know we all want to show you what we can do. So yes, please, please, please approve funding at the very least. Please, 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 please get us a permanent place to stay because it is only going to add benefit to this town, period, hands down. Y'all got any questions for me since I've been on all three positions for them?
Any questions for right now before we discuss some and they ever step back up?
Let me know if you got it.
So let's get caught up with staff with where we're at with some of the questions that we've asked them to gather up for us in the last couple of weeks. One of which is we was, we have discussed the possibility of moving them in beside Mills River Brewery on a tract of land that we already own. And what would entail getting them in there by start of season.
That's right. So a little bit of background for the public and for council. Last year, prior to last year, when Mills River Brewery opened up, they quickly realized that due to their popularity, they needed more space to park their vehicle. So they were parking them on the town's property on Vander Farm Road. And that continued on sort of in an informal basis for several months. I began to grow uncomfortable with it because there were a lot of vehicles over there. I want to protect the town from, from any liability claims. And so the town entered into a lease with Mills River Brewery last year for up to five years, first year plus four more renewals, no charge to the brewery. Essentially, the purpose of that, what that lease does is, is shift liability from, from the town to the brewery for anything that's happening over there on that site. And so right now, the, the, the lease is under control of the brewery, meaning the property is under control of the brewery. The town still owns it, of course. Anything that, that we would, at the market or the town or anybody would like to do over there would need to be discussed with the brewery. I had that informal conversations with them just when I go over there for lunch and they, they seem very supportive of the farm market. So I don't think that that's necessarily an issue, but it's just something to be aware of that we would have to either request to modify the lease with, with Mills River Brewery or in some form or fashion formalize your, the, the relationship between the market and the brewery so that the market could set up over there. So that's the first thing is the lease exists. From a, from a pure zoning point of view, if we were looking at this as a, as a new development, there's not really a good use in the zoning code that would allow farmers markets to operate just black and white. What, what we could probably do most likely, what we would recommend to you is that the farm market apply for a temporary use permit to operate at that site. Remember, it is zoned industrial, which really only allows industrial manufacturing, those sorts of uses. And that permit would be good for a specified period of time, whatever conditions the Board of Adjustments wanted to place on it to be renewed, however often or however long that both parties could have agreed to. And in regards to the question about storing supplies over there, placing a storage container over there is not really considered a building for our town code. So that, that could happen relatively easily. If they, if we were looking at doing a permanent structure, then obviously we would need to make sure again that the use would be allowed one of the zoning code. And then, of course, it would be properly permitted, all the things that go along with that. So that's, those are the questions I think that we went back with after the last discussion. And I've gotten answers for, I'm happy to answer, yes.
One more thing, the, their need for a temp, temporary power source.
Yes. Yes. So the, the, again, that goes back to the town's property being under control of the brewery at this point. So I think if we were to look at doing something like that, we would need to speak with the brewery about potentially modifying that lease. Okay, to allow something like that to happen.
Since, since we've been at the elementary school, we have not been allowed to to have any kind of alcohol on the property. So being next to the brewery is not a bad idea at all. We don't mind, we don't mind because that would actually kind of benefit not only the brewery, but the people we bring in adult clients. And they're actually a very family-friendly environment for it. Um, but it will allow those who would want to intake an alcohol or just want to just brewery hanging out, having a few beers to actually come over to the, the market itself without the restrictions of it being.
I see one potential issue, I won't call it a problem, is the brewery typically opens up eleven-ish, twelve, something like that. So bathroom facilities? We would potentially have to discuss with them, porta-johns and wash stations. Was y'all able to use school facilities?
No, we, we have our own port-a-john. Yes, we have our, we have a line item in our budget for port-a-john. Yep. We maintain those. During COVID, we also invested into portable camping stuff with a little pump water. Served as well, but are no longer, quite as necessary. The port-a-john comes with the sanitizer.
So just a little background, whenever we were talking, whenever we did the lease thing with brewery, it was mentioned that maybe that spot could be used for the farmer's market at that time. And it was proposed to brewery owners that maybe that they could open up and let the farmer's market if, if they went over there to use the bathroom. So, so that would, if that was still an option, which I don't know if it is or not, they did offer it one time. And that would alleviate the pulling of the port-a-john back and forth from the Brittons to, to with the site. So have you spoken with them again about that option, Daniel?
I have. They, I'm not gonna. What I understand from the owners, they're not opposed to it. They want to support the market, but it boils down to staffing. They don't want the public in the building without having staff there. All their staff typically tends to work the afternoons. That was the last conversation I had a month ago.
If you could, can we just talk a little bit? Cause it is ten o'clock.
Linda wanted to indicate the port-a-john.
Not all back and forth. So they will have somebody come and pump it?
Yes.
Anybody on this side got any input into this? Jim, being in the hay business and stuff, we do recognize that that is a wet tract of land. And it possibly would need some, I, some engineering as to how big an area y'all would need gravel. Fair statement? Yes, okay. So keep that in mind and that's going to take a little time. But I guess first and foremost, we would need to contact Mills River Brewery and see how they're willing to work with us with their lease. So we know how to move forward as quick as possible.
Would it be feasible to set up a meeting? And we could meet with them over there and all of us walk the area and look at it at one time?
It would be a public meeting.
Yeah, we would have to advertise it as a public meeting and all if we all go. It would be a meeting.
Well, we, we could do the mayor and.
I'm happy to call up the brewery and sit down with them and see what they're willing to do. Yeah, we can always invite them to come to a council meeting.
Or even possibly in a visioning next week, we might could get one of them to come to that would be the easiest thing I feel.
That would be real good. And if you could get them to come, I think the farmer's market is going to be there in the morning. At visioning.
Cause our hands are a little bit tied with this lease. We just don't know exactly what, what, what direction we even need to go. And even if we can go there.
I thought that we had discussed it earlier and that you said hold off on resigning the lease because we didn't know where the farmer's market was going to land.
Well, according to staff, that was all implemented before our even getting sworn in.
That's right. That's right. So the lease was signed with, with the clause that allows it to renew each year as long as the owner makes the town aware that that's what they want to do. And that happened prior, I believe it happened prior to the election.
Okay, the duplicate lease that I have here says that it starts on January fifteenth, twenty twenty one and terminated on January sixteenth, twenty twenty two.
Right. If they don't give us notice that they want to renew it.
And it also says that either of us can break it with a sixty day notice.
That's right.
So let's try to get them in here if it's okay with us to council next week and let's see where they're at with it and if they're willing to work with us and still maintain their lease. Potentially use the space also since the farmer's market is only operating now there on Saturday mornings. I think it's a win-win for both parties.
The farmer's market is not going to be taking up the whole parking area. Feasibly, it's probably not going to take up half of it. I have a rough draft here that I can pass down and that is set up for, I think, what, sixty vendors?
Yeah.
So this is proposed using their parking lot, not our land, I suppose.
That's proposed in the parking lot.
Their.
If you look in there somewhere, um, better former it is.
Okay, yeah, I see that. Okay.
And they did that when they were just crunching and looking things around, you know, trying to be creative on how to work it and put it.
Has anybody from the farmer, tell me at market, when approached Mills River Brewery about this possibility? Linda has? Do we know what that conversation was?
Linda, tell me what that convo was about. They were willing to help us, especially during COVID. I'm assuming the sentiment is maintained. And when was that? Linda, when was that conversation? Yeah, when was that conversation through?
Okay. So we'll discuss that with them also. That would be a great solution if they're willing to work with that for now. If they're willing. Or if we can maybe possibly do something with ours to help them in parking also to, yeah. Everybody in grants with having somebody from Mills River Brewery coming over during the visioning portion and try to adopt some kind of agreement with them.
Yeah, in times of the essence, if we can get an audience with them, I think that would be beneficial.
Do we need any other action on this tonight?
No, I'll reach out to the brewery in the morning.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get on that next week. We moved the resolution for the West Belt up here to Judy. Up here to Jimmy.
Thank y'all for.
I think Sandra was just looking for a little bit of clarification as to what the resolution entailed. Sandra, did you get a chance to look it over when you emailed it this evening, just read through it?
I did look at some of it, um. Did the count, did the town reach out to adjoining prop- property owners?
No, we did not.
I would like to do that. Considering that they're the number one taxpayer for Mills River. That we might reach out to them and. At least get a, a letter of support from them for it.
Them being?
Um, J.R. Lenamar.
Okay. Is that the pleasure of the board?
For what purpose?
Um, to support having the road finished, I don't know that it has been a public road all the way up through there. That DOT has been maintaining it, and. I do know that they have a specific unification committee over there. That if they have trees or anything cut down, that they have to bring it before their board, and I think before we adopt something like this. That, you know, we need to consider them too. Because they are adjacent property owners.
The road, uh, the road borders GF Lenamar then, right then?
Yeah, I believe that.
And it would go beyond. With the next parcel over, that may or may not be FedEx, is, are they gonna use this road also?
I believe the only folks who might use this road is the, is the airport. Yes, the next parcel over is GF Lenamar. And if you look in the, I guess I don't have it, I think I passed it out, if you look in the packet that I played on your table. There's a site plan showing where the road would be, it already, the state already has those. Technically, there's a road in place, although I think it's just a single lane trail at this point. So all they wanna do is upgrade it to their, to their industrial standards. This is at the request of the airport, so that people can get into the air traffic control tower and to their commercial air cargo area. Off of the state road.
Is the state already owned the roadway? And?
They owned, they own, um, maintenance. I don't know what that technically means, but they, it's, it's a state road, it's a state right of way. They just wanna upgrade it.
Not to interrupt, I posted at the end of West Salt Drive for the special use permit for the airport, and it is a state road. Cause that's one of our posting requirements, is we have to post adjacent to a roadway.
They already own the roadway, that they're just wanting to upgrade?
I, I don't know about the upgrade, but the right of way exists as far as I understand.
Yes, they wanna upgrade the road, if they, they own it for maintenance limits. Um, and they wanna upgrade it to, I believe it's two twelve-foot lanes plus drainage striping, paint, the normal things you would have on a road.
Sandra, I gotta ask, have you been confronted by anybody from Lenamar, or is this just something that you feel needs to happen? To just let them know, or?
I just feel like with them being there, and I have been over to tour through the area. When Sierra Nevada first opened, and I have been over to the bicycle park. And I know how strict and how proud they are of the area. And I just feel like they need to be considered, um, with them being already there.
Okay, so she's wanting to pass this on to Lenamar, does she have any other support from council as to doing that, or? I mean, we see these resolutions like this are pretty much just, uh. Come through here pretty regular.
Can you, what, 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 I'm confused, what is this? Like, what is this resolution?
It's our, basically, I'll ask for staff, but it's basically our approval from the town of Mills River for them to do this.
This is a resolution in support of the state DOT to do the project that the Ashville Regional Airport Authority has asked them to do. Which is to upgrade the road from its current status to an industrial road, which again would be two twelve-foot travel lanes. That's all the appropriate striping. Um, and the state will be paying for this, it's, the town's an obligation financially speaking. This is, this is very similar situation to when Amazon was being built, they requested modifications to that signal out there. So that they could add their, their second driveway on, on Wilson Highway, and the town issued a letter of support for that.
Basically, they're needing this road updated to get, to be able to build that hundred and ten thousand, hundred and ten million dollar. Uh, cargo facility and tower. The way I see it, that's right. They need to get, they will get everything in and out and function.
But it is gonna create a lot of traffic and a lot of heavy trucks. And I just think with them being. Neighbors there, that they need to consider everybody's input before they. Just go ahead and move forward and they have no input.
Do we know if this is a time-sensitive issue?
I don't know, I can, I can ask, I don't know.
Can't remember, I was here, but I can't remember the start date at the airport. They're definitely gonna need a road before they get much going on, um. Oh, we'll quiz the council, so you're in support of letting, just let them more know about this, that's what you'd like to see?
The adjacent part of that.
And, or how are we gonna do that? We're gonna mail them a, a letter and ask for, uh, input back, or, uh, uh, I mean, I'm just not used to this from here. What are you, what are you looking for us to get back, a, a response from them being, they're, they supported or non-support of it, or? My question would be, if, if we come back with a non-support, then what are we gonna tell the airport?
That, that's my question is, what is?
Do they not work with the airport and figure something out?
Well, we don't even know if there's a problem. I mean.
I, I'm, I'm asking not about this, I'm asking about the, a resolution. What is this? Like, what is a, what, what is a resolution when they would, you know, I know it's like basically a formality, is it saying? You're gonna, there's no, they don't want or need or invite.
Uh, two, two questions, one, Sue, will you just touch on overview of resolutions in general, please?
And, and you kind of touched on, on it, a resolution is just formalizing your motion. It's, anytime you do a motion, it's an action of the board. Of, a resolution is usually done when you're not just approving something, but you're sending it off to someone. So it becomes a formal document. Um, it's no more binding than your motion. Um, and I think Daniel said this, this particular one doesn't bind council to anything, it's just. Yeah, we agree the airport needs to do this, but I don't know if I've answered your question.
Yeah, you did.
Okay.
And this is the standard requirement from the state when they're doing projects like this for economic development that they, they, they see input from the local jurisdiction.
When that whole thing got first started, we seen a lot of these coming through, every time they developed a new section, we seen another, if the state was taking it over.
Why don't we ask the airport if they've contacted them and talked to them about it and get a, um, letter of support?
I'm happy to do whatever the board directs.
I've got Sandra wanting that, I would need us, I'd need that in a form of a motion, and I would need a second to support it.
So is there a motion on the floor?
We don't have one yet, no. Sandra, that's her recommendation, if she makes an informal motion, then I will approve that and look for a second.
Okay, I'll make it in the form of a motion that. Do you want it that we will contact or that the airport will contact?
So that you, cause me personally, I would just push this round through.
Well, then let's have the town contact, um. L.A. Lenamar and find out if they are okay with this.
All right, I've got a motion on the floor, how about a second?
Well, I'll second it for the purposes that we can talk about it. I guess. What? I'm in Sandra's camp in regards to, uh. I just don't want to. Several things going on in my mind, but, uh, I'm agreeing with her that, you know, we don't wanna just at face value take on a resolution. For purposes stated that, what it represents without information, so if, you know. If there's a compelling reason why maybe we should. Consider whether or not we do a resolution or not, I think we should, I don't know that really. The town should be contacting the landowners, it's sort of like, it's an ask by the airport, the airport wants this in their back pocket, say we have support local governments, including town of Mills River. So, you know, it's when the, if the airport approached the town, seeing me, the town response is that there's hesitancy, there's concern. Or however you wanna characterize it, but the town go back to the airport and say, well, we'd be willing to do it, but we have concerns about neighbor, neighbors. It's like we, you know, make it a condition of the resolution that as long as they've communicated with their adjoining landowners. About what they propose to do, I don't think we should be talking to landowners about what the airport's gonna do, cause it's none of our business. But, you know, if, if we wanna condition our resolution on the airport. Reaching out, because there may be something, I don't know of anything, but again. Uh, so, uh, I don't know that it's the town's responsibility, so if we. When we vote on this motion, cause it's been seconded and we're gonna have to vote on it, but I don't know that I'll vote for this motion as currently.
I don't see.
Phrase, cause I don't know the town needs to be calling around about other people's projects.
No, I don't see this as a, as a town issue either, because if the, if the airport wants a, a DOT road upgraded. Then the DOT, that's between the airport and the DOT.
That's the way I see it.
So.
Well, like, then do we need to tell them to contact them before they come to us?
I'm gonna defer to your mayor, if there's a motion on the floor of a second.
And still in discussion. You know, as I read, as I read this thing this evening. And it, to me, what I'm reading is simply what they're asking for. It would be astonishing to me that everybody over don't know about this in some form or fashion. Not only that, but they. Lenamar. Sierra Nevada, all of them knows with them spending this kind of money, that they're gonna need a road in there. But at this point, I'm gonna, I've got a first and second, as she. Called it out as a motion, I'm gonna ask for a vote, all in favor?
We should do another motion.
Can we reword it?
Well, we, we've got, we've got, yeah, we've got a motion as read, and we've got a first and second. As I see it right now, we, we don't have the support, we've got three, one, that's, I'm also, I'm, I'm voting no. Randy, no.
Uh, no, let's.
Okay, so, okay, so that one has failed, that motion failed as, as read. I think we're just trying to make more out of this than it is personally, but that's just me and me.
I was concerned when I read this. And it looked to me like it was rubber stamped with our support. And no consideration. Because when I first got this, they must have passed it, had not been seen. And, you know, I was just like, well, where did that come from? You know, the last I heard, they hang this boat and were wanting to put up the, um, panel. Which, you know, we voted and approved that, and now the next thing I know, and then just come the road down through there, well. You know, had they contacted?
Uh, would I be wrong in saying that? This is basically, uh. Being, the resolution is actually to NC DOT, correct? It's not really even to there.
That's exactly right.
I mean, it, yeah, you know, the airport has contacted the NC DOT regarding the purpose for the project. This resolution is to NC DOT. Uh, I don't, I don't know.
Well, then why don't they go contact them?
Well, we don't know that they have. There's, I mean, they've gotta have our support to do. This is us saying that we do support that, uh, road being upgraded.
Well, can we ask them to get a letter of support?
Uh, I guess you could ask anybody for anything, now, when you go to talking with the NC DOT, you might need to know more. You, you know what I'm saying? Okay, so we'd need that in a form of a motion, and is that okay before we go any further and get started in this again, is that sufficient enough for?
Now I'm confused.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, this, this is intended for the use of NC DOT. With some of their compliances needing from us to move forward with this project. I'm sure they. And dotted all their eyes.
Like I said, somebody approached the town and asked for the council's support on this road project.
In a way, as I read it, it's NC.
And our only obligation is either thumbs up or thumbs down. And this particular issue. There's hesitancy on this council. And how to resolve it, I'm not sure, other than if we know specifically what it is we need, then you go back to whoever that ask was. To say they want a resolution from us and say, well. There's a little discomfort and all we want is blank, and we, but we ask it of the person that is, or the individual or entity that came to the town asking for this resolution.
NC DOT.
NC DOT.
No, the, the airport requested it of the state, and part of the state's process is reaching out to the local jurisdiction and seeking a resolution support for the project, which is. How we got to where we are. I mean, if you, if, if you want to direct me to ask DOT to do that, then I think it just needs to be a consensus amongst the majority, majority of the board. Uh, if you want something else, then, uh. Need to be a motion of the board, I guess.
Can, can, can we? Sign this next week when? I, I don't know.
It'll have to be in an open meeting. I would think, we could put it back on the consent agenda if everybody's seen it and given it.
If you're talking, if you're talking consent agenda, you don't have a consent agenda at your next meeting.
Not especially. I'm talking about the.
The twenty-fourth?
The twenty-fourth would be as soon as we can get it back on there. So by consensus, do we want Daniel to reach out to NC DOT and ask NC DOT to talk with Lenamar to see if they're. how do you want to know about this road and if they're okay with the way they're drawing, whether it is or ever?
I want to answer back to that.
Okay, I'm with you. So we need a, we need a, a response back before, prior to the meeting on March twenty-fourth at six thirty. And if not, we're moving, us, we're moving forward with this. Or we're moving forward with this next meeting. We don't need one. It's just in by consensus that, since we're not doing any physical thing with it, we're just asking for more information. And now, as I've said on this council for fifteen, thirteen years, you will see a bunch of these. So this might set a precedence on, on a lot of things. We go, all right, staff, financial director.
No report.
Thank you. Tax collector.
So you have your report in front of you. I'm not going to go into specifics. We're continuing to develop a list of foreclosures. And we served three bank attachments this week and we haven't had any results. It's, it's too early.
Thank you. Parks and Rec.
It's past my bedtime. So no comment unless you have specific questions about anything going on.
Anybody got anything for Parks and Rec?
Yeah, they've finished the riverbank work. So hopefully we'll get some dry weather next week and they can start on trail repair. And then tree planting is our last, last hurrah there. So hopefully the next couple of weeks will be good to go.
Zone Minister.
No update.
Thank you, sir. Town manager.
No updates. Thank you.
Thank you. Council committee. So anybody got anything else that we haven't discussed or not? It would have to be personal, probably. Okay, all right. Nothing else? How about in the journal?
We'll get the agenda for the special meeting.
Tomorrow.
We still have to do it. Sure.
Okay, motions adjourned. Second, I got a first here, a second with James and all in favor. Thank you.